Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. Welcome to tonight's regular city council meeting for March 18th, 2024, where we have one study session item for tonight. It will be representatives from Denver's Fire. We'll be here to present a report regarding the fire services in Inglewood. So I'll welcome the city manager to introduce our Denver Fire Representatives.
Thank you, Mayor Protim, and thank you, Mayor and Council. I am pleased to introduce Denver Fire Chief Desmond Fulton. Desmond, I was fortunate enough to be on the interview panel when he was hired with Denver Fire. The city of Denver reached out and asked for a representative, and I was glad to do that and have enjoyed the partnership with him and the rest of his team. And he was hired in October of 2020 as the Denver Fire Chief, and I'll turn it over to you, Chief.
Thank you for those words and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to sit here and present about the leadership we have and what things are looking like with your fire protection. I do have a PowerPoint that I would like to share, and I'm not going to go into the specifics, but please hopefully you all have a copy of this, and if not, we'll make sure you do as far as our missions, visions, and values. I do have some folks that I would like to introduce here tonight. We've got our Division Chief of Operations, Robert Murphy. He will be presenting the majority of the presentation tonight. We have our Director from 911, Andrew Demeron, who is here with us to answer any questions there might be. We've got Chief Miller, who is in charge of our 911 system as regards to Denver Fire. We've got Tony Jeffers, who's been with Denver Fire for 34 years, and he's an Assistant Chief in District Seven, and obviously Inglewood is part of District Seven. We've got Captain Ngerger, who is now the new captain at Station 37. And I just want to take the time to these gentlemen to thank them for taking their time out of their schedules to be with us today. For our agenda today, we're going to go on an overview of calls. And when I refer to apparatus, that's a general term, but that speaks to engines, that speaks to trucks, which we have in the city of Inglewood. We also have rescues, but apparatus is a general terminology used for engines and trucks and rescues as far as their responses. We will be sharing some of our strengths and successes, obviously challenges, threats, opportunities, and then there will be plenty of time for questions and answers. And with that, I'm going to turn this over. I'm going to ask you to come up here real quick, but I would like to speak real quick to Engine 37 and Truck 38. Right now, we've got total unit arrivals looking at 4,933, and that was for calendar year 2023. And we've got the differences in the types of runs. I'm going to turn that over now to our Division Chief of Operations because he can speak to the specifics of what these reports are going through until.
Thank you, Chief. Members of council, thank you. Mr. Lewis, thank you. Let's talk about the call volume for the city of Inglewood. Total call volume, and these are last year's numbers that we're using right now. You have two fire apparatus that are positioned in Inglewood, Engine 37 and Truck 38. Combined, they had 4,933 calls in the year 2023. Just kind of as a frame of reference, the city and county of Denver in total, last year, we had 123,260, so about 3.9, almost 4% of our call volume comes out of these two rigs here in Inglewood. 71% of the calls that these two apparatus run are EMS related, and that's pretty standard throughout the country. That number nearly mimics what we run in the city and county of Denver, running about 70% calls that are EMS related. We're going to go through some of the strengths and successes. I'll talk about accreditation. I'll talk about our ISO rating, some improvements that you, the city of Inglewood, paid to get done to the locker room and the bathroom at Station 37, our coordination with Inglewood Police and the Fire Marshal's Office, some new really neat tools and gadgets that we have, SCBA's and hydraulic tools on our apparatus. And then the Inglewood Fire Response and Apparatus Gap Map. I just want to really get into the depth of what Denver Fire brings to all of you here in Inglewood, and I'll kind of run a scenario for you. It'll be kind of neat. As a, as a reference point, Engine 37 resides on West Jefferson. Truck 38 resides on South Tacoma. I am not going to read this entire slide, but the Denver Fire Department last year went through kind of their five-year update on accreditation. Accreditation is when an outside agency comes in and kind of looks at us through in and throughout. They literally turn over every rock and stone within the Denver Fire Department and try to figure out if we're doing things the way we should be doing compared to other departments across the country. One of their very big items that they look at is compliance time. Are we getting out of the firehouse quick enough? Are we getting to calls quick enough? When we get on scene, what are we doing? They're also looking at things like our turnout gear that we're wearing, the fire trucks that we're driving, the water supply that we operate off of, the tools that we carry. They did random visits to firehouses and talked to firefighters to see if their mission was aligned with what the administration was putting out. It was extremely in-depth, and we are very proud to be reaccredited for another five years. During these next five years, we have lots of milestones that we have to meet and, and reach, but a very arduous process. We're very proud to be an accredited department. Currently, we are being looked at again by the Insurance Services Office, ISO. Denver Fire Department has a ISO rating of one. There are less than 120 departments nationwide that have an ISO rating of one. What that means is we are the very finest or one of the very finest. How is ISO different than accreditation? ISO in a nutshell kind of looks at it like this. What are you sending to a first due response for a fire? How many rigs are you sending? How many people are you sending? When you get there, what does the water supply look like? What kind of gear are they wearing? The tools that they carry. Everything's sort of based on that first due, whereas accreditation was everything tech rescue, hazmat, all that. ISO is really focused, and they can garner a lot of knowledge by just looking at what do you send on that first due. So if you get a call here in Inglewood for a house fire, they're going to look at everything that we send to that and how it's all put together. We are currently going through the ISO process right now. We currently have an ISO rating of one. I do not think we're going to lose that. I think we'll continue to have that and be one of the few in the U.S. with that. This is a big shout out to Mr. Lewis and his team for putting together the funding to update the locker room at Fire Station 37. The bathroom in the locker room were in much need of repair. They did a fantastic job. Our troops and the paramedics that worked there are very thankful. If you have not been to Station 37 or 38, I highly recommend you coming by for a visit. If you would like to do a ride along on one of those fire apparatus, we can set you up for a ride along anytime that you want. I can say this, that Denver Fire takes much pride in their fire stations. You should be able to go by either one of those firehouses anytime of day in Denver, in Inglewood, in Sheridan, and they should be looking really good. Not me, good. We do something, and we're in the midst of that right now. Every year, we have yearly firehouse inspections. Whereas members of my team, members of the tech services team, we go out and we visit these firehouses, and the crew work very hard. They'll work months and months at a time, cleaning and cleaning and more cleaning and getting that firehouse show ready, and we take a lot of pride in that. This slide has got a lot of information. Really talks about our coordination with Inglewood Police Department and the Fire Marshal's Office. Let me talk kind of going down the left-hand side there. We work closely with Mike Smith of the, of the Inglewood Fire, Fire Marshal's Office. Currently, we're doing some pre-planning of some target hazards in the city of Inglewood, the Medigold on West Oxford, General Shell Brick on West Dartmouth, South Metro Transfer on, on West Union Avenue. And when we look at these kind of places and we work with Mike, he's been very helpful with us making sure that there's adequate water supply coming to and from. Mike's moved hydrants around in there for us. Is our access good? Do we have keys to get in the gate? What is it like when we show up? Is everything marked? There's a litany of things that we look at, and it's been a really good relationship kind of narrowing down and getting our folks that work out here to look at those facilities. Denver Fire has a really good relationship with Inglewood Police Department. That's not always the case wherever you go. I would almost say it's better than what we have with Denver Police Department, and that relationship is very good. We work really closely with Inglewood Police. In fact, they came up with a plan to utilize Truck 38 specifically on some of their SWAT interventions. We're in the midst of writing a standard operating guideline that speaks just to that and how Truck 38 might operate with your Inglewood SWAT team. So very, it's really awesome. Every time I talk to Inglewood Police, I get the same from them, and our folks are always praising the police department. Lastly, on that last bullet point on the left-hand side, every day, there are significant runs that happen either in the city of Denver or in the city of Inglewood. Some of the more significant ones, those are auto-generated and sent to Mike Smith and the Fire Marshal's Office so he can follow up the next day. For example, a technical rescue, a hazmat, or maybe a rollover with parties trapped, definitely any fire situations, he's sort of updated the next day if he's not updated on scene. All of our district chiefs that work closely with Mike, that's the Chief Seven Group out of Southwest Denver, they all know Mike personally. They have his cell phone number. They bug him at all hours of the night, telling him about the comings and goings that are, that are happening in the city of Inglewood. So really, just a really good, fine relationship there. On the right-hand side, there is something that we don't even have in the city of Denver. This was built specifically, specifically for Inglewood, and it's really a response book. If you can imagine that screen there being on an iPad, we have a really progressive Chief Seven, District Seven Chief by the name of Brad Balding. And he put together this iPad, basically response book for anybody that responds into Inglewood. So the two fire trucks, the chiefs, some other companies that respond in Inglewood have all this information available to them, like order to comply, who to call in the city of Inglewood in the middle of the night, like Public Works or somebody else. Just a litany of Inglewood-related stuff that you wouldn't see anywhere else, and it's kind of specific for your community. Having that iPad available has done wonders for our folks. They can get immediately in contact with somebody. They can find who they need to talk to. It's just been really wonderful. I'm trying. There we go. Two things to talk about here, SCBA's and hydraulic tools. This has been some really exciting stuff for our folks on the streets. In July of last year, we received a $2.5 million grant to purchase what's called a 3M Scott Airpack 3. Essentially, that's the breathing apparatus that our folks wear on their backs that they can go into fires. This is state-of-the-art stuff here. These are awesome air packs. The air packs that we had, we're starting to see their end of life. We are starting to see some minute problems with them. With these new air packs, they've been absolutely fabulous, and it really does wonders for morale when you put a new air pack on somebody's back. Obviously, the, the two fire stations in Inglewood were recipients. They're all on these new Scott air packs. Kind of an even more fun toy that we got here in the last year was the, it's called, the brand is called the Holmatro, and they're battery-powered hydraulic tools. If you can think of the jaws of life, that's what these tools are, but they're completely battery-operated. And from the outset, most people would think, why would you have a battery-operated hydraulic tool? Well, about 80% of the country is now in battery-operated hydraulic tools. So these are the spreaders that open up a car when you need to get somebody out, or the cutters that can cut through, through metal, or the ram that can drive a dash up or lift up a car. So spreader, cutter, ram on every single truck company in the city, and that includes Truck 38. The beauty of these tools is that you can now get on the scene, and it's very quiet because the old tools were, were gas-powered. So you had this generator running or a couple generators running because we sent a couple of trucks to these calls. You had a very noisy scene. Now the scenes are quiet. The other really nice thing about these battery-operated tools is that there's no limit on where we can go with them. We have had instances where, for example, a car goes off the road down into a ditch or an embankment. We can't reach it with our hydraulic tools because the, basically the, the cabling was too long. We'd have to really get a bunch of people together to carry everything down there. Now, one person can take a tool and walk anywhere, essentially anywhere with that tool, even inside a building if they need to. So really, really awesome stuff. I highly recommend going by Station 38 and taking a look at these tools. Look on the truck if you would like. We could definitely set up kind of a show and tell with a car and show you how to, how we cut them apart, how those tools work. They're quite amazing. I wanted to walk through this, these next couple slides because I think these are really important. To me, they show the depth of Denver Fire, and I really just wanted to show all of you what you get when a call comes in in the city for something that's on fire. And this particular, where the kind of the little red phone there in the address is, this was an actual call. So it's in the 3400 block of South Grant. These are all the units that responded to this particular incident. And if we kind of go across the top, if we focus in on Engine 37 there across the top, it shows them first on the ticket, and they're first because they're the closest. And if you look kind of across here, we're going to go over to RT. That's their response time. When they got the call, they were there in 2 minutes, 41 seconds. That's pretty phenomenal. The next due engine that came out of Sheridan at a 3:31, and then kind of in South Denver there, an Engine 16 at 4:19. You can go down the list and see where, where other people sort of fell in line under that RT. This is a typical response, the minimum we send to a fire either in Denver or in Inglewood. That's three-engine companies, two-truck companies, one RIT team, which is Rapid Intervention. That's for people to, that get us out if we get in trouble on a fire. So their whole purpose is just to stand by if a firefighter goes down. One heavy rescue, two battalion chiefs, and one safety officer. A total of 31 people are rolling to 3400 South Grant when they pick up the phone and say, hey, something's on fire, something's burning here. This call came in at 3, almost 3:30 in the afternoon. In the gray here, you notice kind of over here on the right, it says PU. That means those companies were picked up. It turned out that this fire was just something burning on the front porch. It didn't extend into the structure, so those companies were really picked up before they were put to use. I think what's really neat is we have this in-house tool that we had one of our line, line shop experts build. It's called the Apparatus Gap Map. The purpose of this map is for the shift commanders and more importantly, the fire dispatch team. When, if you can think about here for a second, think about that 3400 South address, right? All these companies are rolling in there, and what have they done? They've left their firehouse, and they've left this huge gap where there's no fire trucks to go on calls, if that makes sense, right? We've got this huge open area. Right now, what you're looking at is this open, this area right before the call comes in. And the companies that are in yellow are sitting in quarters. So that means these calls are in quarters. We know that that call happened over here. The minute that the call comes in, these companies, now gray, they're assigned to that fire call. So that now they're dedicated, they're coming to the South Grant address. And what we've created here, if you see this blue, and don't look at the Marston Lake, that's a, that's Lake Blue. This blue area here tells our fire dispatch team, hey, we've got a problem here. You've had this huge gap where I don't have good response times, and this has all been calculated. In fact, the gentleman who built this map used a million data points over a five-year period to create nearly every location in the city. Anywhere a fire truck had landed in the city and county of Denver or in Inglewood or Sheridan, he plotted that and then was able to plot times that it would take apparatus to get there. And essentially, what this tells our dispatchers is, hey, you've got this thing happening down in Inglewood, but you better start putting fire companies back in this hole to fill it up because another call may come in, and it may not be a fire. It may be something easy like an EMS call, but it still needs to be covered, right? We don't want to have companies so far out that we miss response times and miss really providing for the community. So looking at the blue, what the fire dispatchers queue up is, they queue up, hey, these are the companies that we're going to send from Denver down to cover, and they will literally take another fire truck and put it in Station 37, and another fire truck and put it in Station 38. And they may park one or two out front or nearby. And you can see here that we have a tower company responding, Tower 23, which is important because of the bucket and their use and their versatility. But if you notice here, this Truck 4, I just think this is kind of important here. Truck 4 is coming from the heart of downtown Denver, 19th and Lawrence, if you can imagine that. They have a great shot coming into Inglewood, but we are a little bit truck-heavy, so to speak, in the downtown area, so we can afford to pull that truck out. Engine 5, 24, 22, and another chief will all come in and fill up that blue area that you saw. That way, there's no missed coverage for that next call that may come in. So using the Gap Map, it gets used all the time, every day. In fact, Assistant Chief Bob Miller here could speak circles around me about it. But it's a really neat device that we're very proud of. Most importantly, it helps us meet our response times. When somebody picks up the phone, wherever they're at, and they call 911, we want to make that response time. We would love all of our rigs to get there in 2 minutes, 41 seconds, like Engine 31 did on South Grant, and we strive to make that happen. I am going to turn this presentation over to Mr. Andrew Damron.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Damron. I am the Director of 911 for the city and county of Denver. We work in partnership with the Denver Fire Department and the Denver Police Department. And some of the questions that had come through specifically highlighted a few items particularly pertaining to 911 calls and calls being transferred from the Inglewood PSHAP. So I wanted to kind of provide a little bit of information and context there. The, the items that were brought up in the questions sent to us were primarily from last summer. And last summer, we were at below 50% effective staffing for, for much, much of the summer months. We have been, since COVID, trying to recuperate our losses. We finished 2021 with a turnover of about 47%. Colorado is a state of people who come from elsewhere, and then when they spend a year isolated from their family, they have a tendency to move home. So we had a lot of folks go back to Texas, go back to California. And so we, we have been really putting a lot of effort into building up the team, not just adding additional staff, but also include in increasing our retention rates. So some of the information that I provided for you, as of March of this year, we're actually at 101% staffing on our 911 call takers, which is having a significant impact on the speed of answer for 911 calls that come through and as well for calls that, that need to be transferred from the Inglewood team. For those of you who aren't familiar with how 911 works, anyone who dials 911 from a mobile device, that call is routed based on, at best, the pinpoint location of the caller or at worst, the address of the nearest cell tower. So anyone who dials 911 in Inglewood is most likely going to get Inglewood PD's PSHAP. If it is a fire or medical call, they then have to transfer that call to us. And if we are short-staffed, our call volume is high. That's where some of those delays can come in, where they can come in, where the Inglewood team are waiting on hold to get ahold of one of my call takers. Our increased staffing is, is going to have a significant impact moving forward on that. The, the efforts that we put forth toward this, increasing our pay rate by about 45% since 2020, and a renewed effort on wellness, peer support, taking care of the team, making sure that folks want to stay there. And that has been reflected in our turnover rate. I mentioned 2021, we had a turnover of 47%. Last year, we finished with just 19%. When you look at 911 as an industry, in a good year, our turnover rate fluctuates between 15 and 30% on average. So a turnover of 19 for 2023, we were very, very happy about that. The final piece that I didn't include in here that is being done is some work happening regionally for the entire Denver metro area. I work very closely with Kathy Rayly, who's the Executive Director of the Arapahoe County 911 Authority, as well as my peers in Jefferson County, in Douglas County, Adams County, Aurora. And we are working on a regional CAD to CAD hub for the entire Denver metro area. What that will effectively allow our dispatchers to do is communicate electronically instantaneously, even as they are transferring the call. So someone in Inglewood, for example, gets a medical emergency, they can input that into their computer-aided dispatch software. They can then push that electronically to one of our fire or EMS dispatchers. They can get units en route even as they are transferring the caller over so that we can ask any additional questions that we need to know. This is something that, that we're working on for the entire metro area. I don't have a timeline for you yet, but we are kind of working collaboratively to make that happen. And I'll ask it back.
As you can see, we lost a member of our team. This was not planned, but actually the commotion you heard was a structured fire that came in in Inglewood. So there was a fire 2077 West Harvard Avenue that we're currently on. There are no injuries, there are no transports, the fire is out, but it's kind of apropos. So that's what the commotion was. So my apologies for that, but those are your, your firefighters' hard work. Some threats that we're currently facing, if you're not aware, cancer is the number one killer of firefighters across the country. We currently have nine people that are off from our department that are battling work-related cancer. So these are things that we take very seriously. When we speak to PFAS, there's PFAS in many forms, but PFAS was prevalent in the foams that we were using to fight fires that we were led to believe that was safe to use years ago. We currently have gone through the process, working with the State of Colorado to take all of the foam out of the firehouses. That has now been taken place, the State of Colorado is now in possession of the PFAS based foams. We flushed all of our tanks on our engines and now we are using different types that are PFAS free. Some other things that we're paying attention to is our PPE. Unfortunately, when I, when I say PPE, that's our bunking gear, that's the coats and pants that our firefighters wear to protect themselves and keep themselves safe from the heat. Unfortunately, the vapor barrier is PFAS based that they spray on that to repel the water. Again, this was something that was not made aware to us as firefighters and through investigations, it was brought to light a couple of years ago. So one thing that we're doing as a department that I'm very proud of is we have two sets of PP, of two sets of PPE currently. And the reason we have that is when we go into a structured fire, there's many carcinogens that our folks are exposed to. So when they come out of that fire, they will now be expected to go back to the firehouse, take a shower, clean up, put their second set of PPE in service, and take that other set, and we will send that to the cleaner at the tune of about $500,000 a year is what we spent to keep that bunker here clean. Knowing that there's PFAS in the water repellent, we are now looking at buying single-layer PPE as well. So we will be one of a handful of departments that actually has three different types of PPE. The benefit of that single-layer PPE is, in the evenings and at nighttime, our folks normally will pull, put on their bunking pants, or when we train, we will wear our normal PPE. The practice now will be changed to we will use that single-layer PPE that we know is PFAS free, thus less exposure time for our folks when they're training and in after hours. Obviously, when we go to structured fires, we have to wear our normal PPE, but if there are instances and opportunities to, to not wear that, where we know there's PFAS present, that is why we're going to be purchasing the single-layer PPE. We're currently going through an RFP now and in a trial state, and I expect of our folks to have that by the beginning of summertime. Opportunities. One thing that I would like to bring to the attention of is, is we have a wonderful system there that removes the toxins from the trucks and engines. We start, it's basically a garage, right? We start that fire truck or fire engine before we pull out, while all of that diesel exhaust goes into a compartmentalized system that exhausts it to the outside air. Right now, we have, we are in need of replacing the current system that we have at Station 37 and 38. So we've got enough parts to fix one, and working with the contractor on this particular type of system, we're looking at a cost of roughly 27K to get both of them functional again. But again, this is one thing that we take seriously because, you know, our folks are exposed to a lot of terrible things, and anything that we could put or some sort of implementation in place to ensure their safety, this is something that we're looking at as a future opportunity at these particular firehouses in Inglewood. With that said, I would like to say thank you for the opportunity to share what we do. It is absolutely an honor to be in front of you, and it's a pleasure. And I speak for our entire department, I want to say we're very proud of what we do, we're very proud of who we are, we're very proud to serve the citizens of the City and County of Inglewood. And with that, I will offer the opportunity for any questions.
Thank you, Chief Fulton, and thank you, the rest of you, for the presentation. And I really appreciate it, appreciate the partnership and all the, all the equipment that you bring to Inglewood for, for our city to use as well. And so with that, I'll open it up to questions from City Council. Member Ward.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. This conversation sort of came about as a result of some of my concerns, after having sat with dispatch and, in, in the police department, and also observed at least one phone call that took place in Denver, where the person calling for emergency assistance was literally waiting on hold for multiple minutes before they could even talk to anybody. And, and finding out that our dispatchers in Inglewood are calling that same emergency operations center or, or phone center to get our residents through to a fire call or a paramedic call. And that's been very concerning for me. So the, the question I have for you tonight is whether there really is a better way. If we were doing business with an organization that was on the Arapahoe County E911 Authority, we would be able to transfer all of the call information that we already collected from the caller directly to the appropriate dispatcher who would be dispatching the fire and medical units to the scene, saving an extra step and saving the potential trauma of having to repeat yourself in an emergency situation. Now, I will say that I've had some personal experiences, I've, I've had a number of opportunities to observe your department in the course of its professional duties, some of which were less fun than others. But I, I've never had a problem personally. I had to call several years ago, my wife was down at home, and, you know, within three minutes, there were some nice men coming into my house to take care of the problem. And my concern is that now, compared to 2014, when we signed the contract in the first place, the situation has changed. And there are other factors at work that weren't at that time. And if we can't maintain the level of performance that we had in 2014, I, I don't, I don't know how we can continue using the same service. So that's where I'm coming from, and I welcome your response.
Absolutely. Sure, that, that's a very fair question, and you absolutely have a right to, to question the response times. I mean, and I appreciate the fact that, you know, you're looking at where we were and where we are now. And a term I like to use is, is we always strive for greatness, right? If you settle for good, you know, that would be great. And, you know, with the situation with your wife, hopefully things turn out okay, and I'm glad to hear it, I'm not surprised that we were there that quickly. But I will go over a few things as far as operationally that I'm very proud of, and I think you will find are very important as members of City Council. And I've also asked that Andrew Damron and Chief Miller come up here because as far as the 911 dispatching component, that is definitely their area of expertise. You know, as far as the actual response to any incident, there is no doubt in my mind that you cannot find a better fire department to respond to emergency needs, hands down. We have not only one heavy rescue, but we have two. We have tower companies that are, have the opportunity and ability to extricate anyone from any type of intrepid vehicle, any type of electric vehicle, any type of machinery at a factory. We've got trained technicians that repel down the side of buildings to get washed, window washers that are stuck. We've got folks that dive in rivers every single year to rescue people. We've got people that go under the ice, over the ice. We have over 80 hazmat technicians in Denver. When people come to, to the city for training, they come from all over the country to learn from our folks. So I'm very proud of the, the women and men that we have and the expertise that they bring. So that fire that I was just speaking to that happened, you know, we had five companies there within three minutes. So that was an instance where things were great. But you're correct, sometimes things don't go as planned, and things aren't as pristine as we would hope for them to be. But I assure you that we're very proactive, and I, I like to look at things that, how can we be proactive rather than reactive? And an example of that would be is a brand new program that we just rolled that called Community Risk Reduction. So knowing that there are certain types of calls that we go on, and I'll use an example. If we have data that shows that we're going to a, a home for elderly folks, and we keep going there on trips and falls, why wouldn't we take that data and go in there and educate people and say, hey, we're going to go and take a look in, in your, in your residence and see if there's any carpets that are there? Can we tape them down? Can we give you the means necessary by putting tape down in the bathtubs and so on and so forth to ensure that you don't have to call 911? Because if we can take care of things at the beginning, we don't need to be there at the end. Some other components that they're doing is we're actually not just only handing out smoke detectors, but we're installing smoke detectors. So this particular incidence, if we find through our investigation with one of the best arson departments in the country, that there indeed were, there were no smoke detectors, that's a problem. How many other neighbors don't have smoke detectors? We will then blanket that neighborhood to say, who else needs a smoke detector? We're not going to hand it to you because I don't want a person that's 80 years old climbing up a ladder. We can do that. We've got people that, that can do that. So these are things that are very proactive and things I'm very proud of. You're speaking to 911, and that's something that's very important, so I want to make sure that we answer this correctly for you. So, gentlemen.
Councilman Ward, I thought your, your question was actually very well stated, is there a better way? And there absolutely is. And that is the work that we are doing on that CAD to CAD hub that I mentioned. The, the current state of 911 across this country is woefully inadequate when it comes to the underlying technology. We had a circumstance last year where we had a resident who was right on the border between Denver and Aurora, and was hit by stray gunfire from a nearby gang fight. Her family members tried calling 911, and because they were so close to the border with Aurora, they got Aurora. Aurora then had to transfer the call over to Denver. And that delay, even though it didn't actually delay response, it creates the sense of panic in, in the residents, right? Because they're being told, wait, I have a life or death emergency, now you're telling me you have to send me somewhere else. So I can tell you that the work being done on a national level around some of these things is taking root. The FCC has recently released rules that require cell phone carriers to utilize location-based routing as opposed to the older location of the cell tower routing. But even then, you know, we, we live in a country of municipalities and borders and, and emergencies don't care, right? Where, where the line is between one city and another. And so that's where the work that we are doing in partnership with all of the metro areas to really kind of congeal our technology, to really reduce even the need for calls to be transferred. The ideal future state, and this is what kind of the 911 industry is working on as a whole, is a standard computer language that allows Inglewood's CAD to talk to my CAD, to talk to Aurora's CAD, to talk to Glendale's, regardless of who the vendor is. We have been pushing the vendor community to really kind of change things and move a little bit more toward what we need rather than what's best for their bottom line. So there is, there is a lot of holistic work happening. And, and what I can tell you is that you have a partner in Denver 911. I know Carrie Parman, who manages the, the 911 center here in Inglewood. She has a partner in our team, they communicate on a regular basis. And so, you know, opportunities like this to kind of touch base and, and update you all on the work that we're doing, I think are important, and we're always available.
May I ask a follow-up?
Yeah.
I guess one of the, one of the sources of tension for me is the fact that we call as public officials the same number that Denver residents call in order to get a truck or an ambulance dispatched. I think that would be some low-hanging fruit potentially, is to prioritize the Inglewood calls so that when someone's already on the phone with a 911 dispatcher, they, if they have to get handed off, can get handed off seamlessly and as quickly as possible. And I, I don't know if Denver has some policy that, that prohibits that or prevents it, but I, I see those calls as different, and I would like them to be handled differently. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Member Ward. We'll go to Member Wright.
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation. It's, I have a couple of questions, and I guess the first will be to piggyback to Member Ward. And it would be, so when Inglewood is transferring a call, do we go into the general queue, or is that call coded where we go into a priority queue since someone has already called and that clock has already started ticking? And I, I know that you said that information is already put in and, you know, the wheels are rolling, but to the person on the other end, they don't know that. So to them, you know, that adrenaline's going or that fear is going, so are those calls queued where that Inglewood person is put at the top of the queue when it gets to Denver?
So we have a dedicated mutual aid line that was actually set up when Denver and Inglewood partnered on all of this. It is just for Inglewood and a couple of other first response entities. The other thing that is worth mentioning is that all of the Inglewood dispatchers also have the direct line to the fire and paramedic dispatchers. Those are phone numbers that are not publicly available. Those are not numbers where their phone is ringing on a regular basis. We prefer that they come through the 911 call takers because they are our universal call takers who can triage those calls most effectively. But if at a certain point, and I know Inglewood has this policy, if it's looking like they can't get through because they've been on hold for a certain amount of time, they can dial one of those numbers and get direct to a dispatcher, which they have used in the past.
Okay, so that brings a question to me. 911 calls are recorded, correct?
Correct.
For training and everything else? So those private numbers, are those recorded if they need to call them?
It, it's not a, don't think of it as a private number rather than a direct extension. So yes, they are still recorded.
Okay, okay. And then you said that there are other entities. How many different cities does Denver have agreements with, just for point of information?
In, in the form and shape of the one with Inglewood? None. It's just Inglewood.
Okay, okay. And then I have a, I have a couple other questions, please. When I was reading the contract, it says that there's a, a joint advisory board. Are you aware of this, or has it ever even been activated? Do you know?
Just for clarification, we do provide fire protection and EMS for some other entities as well. So we also provide this for the city of Glendale, and we, of Sheridan, and then Glendale, and then Skyline Fire Protection District. So we have a, a firehouse in Sheridan, Station 36, and then Station 5, which is located in Glendale. So we do provide fire and EMS protection for them, and then the city of Skyline as well. That was, I just wanted to clarify that first question, and then, of course, and the second one, I apologize.
When I was reading the PAC for this evening, it talks about a joint advisory board, and I was curious as to who chooses who's on that advisory board, or if it's ever been activated, and if it hasn't been, that's a good thing.
That, I would need to get clarification because we have many advisory boards. One of them would be an EMRS advisory board, and actually, I'm on that with these two gentlemen right here, and we meet monthly on that. But I, I'm not sure, we have other advisory boards, so I'd have to get clarification to what you're, what you're referencing there. But I'd be more than happy to, to offline find out which advisory board you're speaking to and get you more specifics to that.
Okay. And then another question I had, please, is it, it talks about... And then another question I had, please, is it, it talks about, and this is on page thirteen, it's more of contracting. What cities laws overrule? Denver's or Inglewood's? Do you know? It talks about cities, the charters, the, the municipal codes.
Sure.
So if it came down to each, you know, Inglewood, would our, our municipal codes and our charter overrule what Denver's are or would it be Denver's?
Sure.
Rules? And, and let's say the fire code, for example, I'll just throw that out there.
Yeah, that, that's a great example. And actually, I'm going to call Mike Smith up here because we work hand in hand with the Fire Marshal's Office here. And just to be very clear, there's international fire code.
Right.
And then Denver has specific fire code for Denver. And then I will let you just speak to the relationship with that. So when we go through a new code cycle, we will adopt Denver Fire's codes and then we have six months to adopt their amendments. We do adopt the amendments. We don't adopt Denver Fire's policies or ordinances. We still follow our internal policies and our ordinances.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
It's clear as much.
Okay. Perfect. Yeah, so we do go through the same code cycles they do. We do adopt their amendments that apply to Inglewood, but we don't adopt policy or ordinance from Denver Fire.
Okay, okay. And then one more. Does EMS receive ISO ratings like the fire department or are they hand in hand?
That is a question that, that I honestly don't have an answer for. I, I will find out for you. Right now, it's a separate contract we have with Denver Health to provide medical services for Inglewood. And you're, you're very much a unicorn in the aspect. You have services that, right now, Denver Health, they are what's called dynamic dispersal. So they don't have fixed resources. They do in Inglewood. So you actually have fixed resources in Inglewood and that is not the case in Denver. So when we get a medical response, that fire truck or engine is rolling out that door side by side with that, that EMS engine. So you're getting the absolute best when it comes to EMS care. I'm sure there are standards in place for EMS, but I don't want to give you that information. So that again, that is something that I will find out for you and find out exactly if they do have something in regards to an ISO or accreditation.
And, and I will say, we have a family member that has a severe medical condition. The difference from when Denver took over, phenomenal response time compared to how it used to be. So thank you guys. We appreciate your service. So thank you.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you for the question.
Thank you, Member Wright. Member, Member Russell, oh, and before we go to Member Russell, I wanted to mention that our, our mayor is on, on virtually with us today. So he's up there in the corner, don't see a question from him, but wanted to make sure everyone knows that the mayor is present with us virtually tonight.
Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead, Member Russell.
Thank you. And my question goes back because I had an issue too with response times. The fact that your turnover rate is down to nineteen percent, do you expect that to improve? And I'm kind of wondering if there could be some issues on Inglewood's side in the call transfers, not just necessarily the transfer itself, but can you speak any more to that?
I certainly can. And, and Councilmember Wright, I apologize for misspeaking earlier. You, you asked the question perfectly and I heard it completely wrong. So as far as the transfer process, anything, you know, if we have any issues, as I mentioned, we work well with Carrie and her team. So we're, we're pretty well able to address those in the moment. So I am not aware of any institutional issues with, with the transferring of calls.
Okay. So have, have the transfer times or, or the response times improved since the turnover rate has since the last time we requested information?
I have not looked at data specific to Inglewood, but I can tell you that our overall speed of answer has improved. I think last summer, we had, when, when our staffing was at its worst, we had an average speed of answer of a little under thirty seconds and now we're closer to seven seconds. So it, it's a dramatic increase.
I appreciate that. And in reading, I, I've been on council longer than anybody else on council at this point in time. The fire contract was approved with you before I got on council, but I was paying attention at the time. And looking back over this, I think we did an amazing job. And as a council, I do think we need to address the response times and do whatever we can to improve that. But overall, I think it was an amazing choice for Inglewood to go with Denver. And I just thank you for your support and your presence in the city. Thank you. Oh, I do have one other thing. And I don't know who should answer this question. When you were talking about the apparatus gap and, and vehicles getting, like one of them was brought from downtown Denver to replace the, the one from Station 38. So what my question is, we are thinking about putting in traffic calming measures at Downing and Dartmouth and also at Logan and Dartmouth, which are two major arterials. Will that impact fire service from Denver into Inglewood?
It should not, no. And, and we are constantly evaluating. The nice thing about what our Denver 911 team does is we're constantly evaluating our traffic patterns and I'll, I'll use downtown Denver as an example because that's what I'm most familiar with, the bicycle lanes that are going throughout Denver. We're going to evaluate the way our apparatus turn and we're going to make those changes, those updates in CAD so that we know the most direct way to respond. And we'll do the same with any changes that are made in Inglewood. It goes to our GIS team, which uses an Esri format and then diagnoses the best, the best route and the closest available units to respond.
So do you ever recommend not doing things because it creates a problem for fire response times rather than just evaluating, what are we going to do now?
Well, this, let me just say, this is a, it's, this is an opinion of mine and this is the way that we evaluate changes, the way that we, we see changes. We, you know, our, our input is one side, but, but we can overcome those obstacles. We have a dense enough population, a dozen of population of vehicles responding from different directions that we can calculate what the most, what, what the most, the quickest response would be. Does that, does that answer?
Yes, that does.
I apologize.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
I would, if I may, Councilwoman Russell, add on that a little bit. One thing that we have in place obviously is a great relationship. So anytime there are traffic closures due to construction or things such as this, that Mike Smith will reach out to our operations division and also our fire marshal to let them know. But the one thing that, that sometimes we lose sight of is we'll look at specifics, you know, in a book and we'll look at specific measurements. But what I ask is, and I ask this to our same council folks in Denver, is give us the opportunity to, to come there and you can see the challenges we face. Because sometimes on paper, a roundabout looks wonderful or, or certain bike lanes, but sometimes they could have a hindrance. And an example I'll use is taking a left-hand turn. These trucks are very large and we have to swing out and take that right lane. And if there is a vehicle parked where it shouldn't be parked or, or there's parking spots that are currently valid and makes sense, but we didn't take all that to account, they can't take the proper swing out to make that turn. So we have had impacts in Denver where we will have to get out and actually back, get backers to back that rig up to make the turn. So I understand the, the importance of, of what we're trying to accomplish, but I just ask that we have the ability to bring these trucks and engines there, not just what's in Inglewood, but also other ones that would be responding to emergencies here because they're not all the same make and size. So to ensure that we can be as expeditious as possible to make sure we're, not only we're meeting the response times, but that we're, we're getting the right resources in the right places in the right amount of time.
I appreciate that. And the reason I asked that question is because in the contract, it did say that if the fire marshal reaches out, you will come and give advice. Because I would rather ask you for advice. I know that we have a, we put a block on one road that goes straight from Jefferson Station to the south of, or to the north on Elati and you can't go straight through on Elati because of the way we designed the traffic, which increases the response time for the fire trucks. They have to go all the way around.
Correct.
And so if we called you ahead of time, it may help mitigate some of those issues. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And again, I appreciate the partnership and, and your fire marshal's been amazing about letting us know. But if these are long-term plans, I, I definitely want to be part of the discussions to ensure that we're doing our absolute best to ensure that we're not putting things that are, that are what would be self-imposed hurdles.
Perfect. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do know that our city manager had, when we did this design for Dartmouth, had reached out to Denver Fire. So we did, I knew, I know we did do the communication there. So, Member Pring.
Thank you. Thanks for being here this evening and for your partnership in keeping Inglewood safe. Just a couple of quick questions. One, I'm just curious about the gap map. So how does that work? When, when a vehicle, you know, several vehicles are moved off to an incident, is, are there GPS related things to, to this platform or is it a manual entry system where someone's tracking that we now have an incident and, and are sending trucks out? So we've got to disperse our, our vehicles from other areas to keep the coverage and keep everyone safe.
Absolutely. So you want to speak to that?
So the gap map uses our CAD information, our AVL. Every fire truck has a, has an MDT, a mobile data terminal inside of it. And that transmits our position through our AVR, our auto vehicle locator. So if we look at it right now, we can see various calls throughout the entire city of Denver. That's a live view of what our gap map is. And our dispatchers are not just looking at the units that are responding, they're looking at the next call. So the fire that Chief Fulton just talked about, we got our resources on scene there. We are concerned about that fire, but as dispatchers, we're concerned about the next fire, the fire that happens two blocks away where we're most vulnerable. So we'll start moving those resources almost immediately. Once our first alarm assignment is on site, we'll start moving rigs in to cover in as recommended by our gap map. And so if that fire goes to a second alarm or there's another fire nearby, our response time should be very similar to our primary response.
Okay.
It's very unique in Denver.
It's very helpful, yeah.
Yeah, we're very lucky to have such a, such a robust system and, and, and the ability to draw upon our technology to, to suit each individual area.
Yeah. I, I should have asked, is it real time and just kept the question simple? And then my other question perhaps is more for our city manager, but I did notice in reading through the packet, when we first were looking at the draft IGA and, and working on that, there was a section in there that the city manager would be reviewing response times. So I just wanted to learn a little bit more about, does that still occur? How often does it occur? What does that process look like? And is there any kind of trigger or threshold beyond which we would move where that would prompt a conversation with city council?
Thank you for the question, Member Pring. Yes, Denver Fire actually sends my office every day, a daily report on all runs called Denver Runs Inglewood, kind of a funny name, for that daily email. And so we review those with, with great, great regularity. In addition, we have an annual review with the police department, Fire Marshal Smith, looking at the contract, just making sure that we're in compliance with everything. And so, you know, we had noticed some of those longer times during the great resignation, the period of the great resignation, when the 911 center was short-staffed and recognized that that was an issue, but we're in contact with Denver Fire and understood kind of some of those challenges and will continue. And if there's a better way that council would like that monitoring done, we're open to that.
Thank you very much for that information. It sounds like it's an ongoing check in and, and conversation. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Member Pring. And we'll go to Member Ward and we'll try to wrap it up here so we can get onto the regular meeting here in a few minutes.
I think before we wrap up, I, I would be remiss if I didn't pause a moment to thank you guys for what you're doing. I've, I've, I've spent a significant amount of time analyzing the contract both after it was adopted and, and more recently. And I've also, as, as part of my duties on this council, evaluated other options. You all are probably aware of the market. There's really realistically one other option that Inglewood has aside from Denver. And as part of this project to evaluate response times, I pulled the response times from that other department, I'll just say it, South Metro, and was astonished at their, at their Q3 2023 response times. I don't know if you guys monitor those or not, but I expected to see something substantially different than what I found. And what I found was in, in the cases that I evaluated, Denver was consistently performing at or above the level that, of service that South Metro districts like Cherry Hills Village receive from South Metro. So thank you for that. I think there, that we do have room for improvement here as, as some of the things that we've discussed. But overall, I've left this conversation and the analysis that I've done previously confident that Denver is a good choice for us right now.
Well, thank you for that comment, Councilman Ward. And again, we're accountable to you and we're accountable to the folks in this room. And I just want to ensure you that we're doing our absolute best, but we will never settle for good. We'll always strive for great. And I appreciate this opportunity to share what we're doing and look forward to future discussions.
Thank you very much, Chief Fulton. And thank you for the rest of you for the present, presentation tonight. We very much appreciate you taking your time to come and answer our questions and we're happy with the partnership with Denver Fire and looking forward to continuing to work with you guys in the future. And we'll take a five-minute break here before our regular council meeting. Members of the public will be back shortly to continue on with the regular meeting. We'll have public comment shortly after we begin. Thank you.
Well, now we move on to item seven, uh, seven, recognition of scheduled public comment. The deadline to sign up to speak for scheduled public comment is Wednesday by five P. M. Prior to the meeting through the city clerk's office. This is an opportunity for the public to address city council. There is an expectation that the presentation will be conducted in a respectful manner. Council may ask questions for clarification, but there will not be any dialogue. Please limit your presentation to five minutes and written materials for the presentation to council may be submitted to the city clerk. And our first speaker tonight is Marcia McGilly. Marcia McGilly is the executive director of the Aurora South Metro SBD C. And Lori Walmart, associate director of the Aurora South Metro SBD C will address council regarding their annual update. In addition, Marcia has a special recognition that she will announce tonight. The Small Business Administration has been named the Aurora South Metro SBD C as the National Center for Excellence and Innovation Award winner for 2024. Marcia will receive the award in Washington, D. C. During the National Small Business Week later this year. Congratulations, Marcia, and thank you for your partnership with the city of Inglewood. And I'll welcome Marcia McGilly forward now.
Thank you, Mayor Protim and council members for your time this evening. This is our annual economic update, and again, my name is Marcia McGilly, and I'm with the Aurora South Metro Small Business Development Center. We have had a wonderfully successful strategic partnership with the city of Inglewood since 2016. We provide your citizens with free and confidential one-on-one consulting, business education workshops, and business resources. I'm going to talk about a couple of the successes, some economic impact, and then I'm going to close with a couple of goals for next year. I'd first like to introduce Lori Womer, who is on the call this evening. She is the new associate director of Aurora South Metro SBD C, and she is focusing on Oliver Rappaho and Douglas County outside of the city of Aurora, although the city of Aurora is our host. Welcome, Lori. Couple successes for 2023 I wanted to highlight. The Office of Economic Development and International Trade and the Small Business Development Centers did a soft launch of our new statewide program for succession planning. We did this launch at the city of Inglewood in, on November 1st. The goal is, of course, to keep businesses in the local community. We all know that 52% of the Colorado business owners will be leaving in the next five years, and so this program is very important to keep people in your local area. Our program for our center will be start with an info session led by Lori Womer. There'll be four online modules, then there'll be one-on-one consulting in between those modules with consultants. We have purchased seats on the buy, biz, buy, sell, and quiz valuation programs, so the clients will get reports from those. Next, we held an SBA lenders training. Instead of doing a client lender training this year, we did one for regional lending officers, and the Small Business Administration came to the city of Inglewood, and we trained in September about a dozen of those lenders with the latest processes and loan programs from the SBA. We did hold for the first time an annual business owner survey by Inglewood proper business citizens. 80% recorded that they were still recovering or fully recovered, so they did not say they were failing, but that was good news. Issues still impacting them, rising costs, supply chain issues, hiring and retention of employees, funding for sales decrease. Workshops that they asked for were lending, marketing, financial, and business planning, and we do all of those. All of those that were surveyed asked for one-on-one consulting, and Lori is following up with all of those individuals. I do want to let you know that Lori and I meet with the economic development team monthly, and we discuss participating businesses. We actually had a business moving from Aurora to Inglewood. We connected with your, with Darren. We have our need, uh, we discuss the needs and the training needs for those businesses. We also help those that get initiation and acceleration grants. Finally, some economic highlights, uh, new, new citizens, the number of citizens that we helped, 287 this last year with 983 consulting sessions. There were 32 jobs created and 24 jobs retained, over a million in capital formation, about 225,000 in private commercial contracts, and an increase in 220,000 in sales, uh, sales, sales tax for y'all. Finally, the customer satisfaction, um, 97% on our consulting sessions and 96% on our training sessions, and the goal is 90, and I always make sure that we're above 95%, to be honest. Few things about 2024, since we had such a great 23, we will have an ongoing collaboration with consulting and training and everything else we do for the city, and we are ongoing, having meetings with the chamber and EDDA to assist with the small business training there. We have a growth planning program that will be using live, um, live plan software. Lori's in charge of this new pilot program for our center, and we will have to be increasing funding because ARPA funds will sunset in 26 for us. We have them through, through four, five, and six. To retain the current levels of services that we have for all of our territory, we are going to have to raise more funding, of course, because everything doubled or tripled in COVID, and we did not go back down to those numbers. I am now available for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Ms. McGilly, and I will now open it to any council members who have questions. Seeing none, we appreciate your time tonight, and we appreciate the partnership that Inglewood has had, our Economic Development Department has had with the Aurora South Metro SBD C. Thank you for coming tonight. And now we'll move on to our next speaker, but before we do that, there's one announcement that I wanted to make before we started, but I failed to. I know there are a number of people who are here to talk about Movement 5280. I wanted to just make the public aware that there will be a meeting facilitated by the city tomorrow at 5:30 to 7:30 at the Mally Rec Center. That will be more of an opportunity for questions and back and forth where you can see what, you know, ask questions and find out what role the city has, and, and then we'll be following that up with a meeting with Movement 5280, and hopefully have an opportunity to really bring some peace and unity to the neighborhood and make sure everything moves forward in a positive way, but wanted to let you, make sure that you are aware that those meetings are coming. We do welcome you to speak tonight as well on that subject, but wanted you to know about that as well. Our next speaker is Kathleen Bailey, an Inglewood resident, will address council regarding the need for actual 25-year rain event capacity infrastructure in the upstream half of the South Inglewood basin, and I'll be asking each person tonight to give their, um, their cross streets or address for the record, so, um, welcome, Ms. Bailey.
Did I just turn, yeah. Kathleen Bailey, Jason in Union. Good evening, fellow Inglewood citizens. The regular average rain event we all experience every year is identified as a two-year rain event. A two-year rain event drops 0.82 inches rain depth in one hour across an area. Our current main trunk line pipe capacity is built only to handle a two-year rain event. The city will be installing 25-year rain event capacity infrastructure or larger in every major drainage way in our city except the upstream half of the South Inwood Basin. Last meeting, Member Wright kindly and sincerely, in her council response, assured me that staff was working on improving the capacity of the upstream half. But in fact, this CM and public work staff have been working very hard not to increase the two-year rain event capacity of the upstream half of the South Inwood Basin, because they base their downstream cost calculations on maintaining the upstream's limited two-year rain event capacity system that discharges only eight, 0.82 inch depth of, of water collected, uh, collected from the upstream half into the greenway off Cherokee, where it heads to Tarlo Park and enters the downstream system. A 25-year rain event capacity main trunk line pipe would have actually increased that discharge to 1.66 inch deep water collected from across the upstream and then discharged into the greenway where then that amount would enter the downstream system. That significant increase of water being received downstream would have required new calculations and cost adjustments to the current planned downstream capacity for the new downstream infrastructure in order to handle that significant increase in water from the upstream half. A, a recalculation would be, have been doable. Fact one, to point out a blatant fact, CM and staff could have calculated the downstream infrastructure based on the intention to actually plan to increase the upstream half for this 225-year rain event capacity, but they didn't. CM and staff simply intend to allow the upstream half to continue to be subject to, to flooding in order to avoid the increased costs for their planned downstream infrastructure, and that is exactly what the Altig Plan does for the CM. Their significantly cheaper 2.2 million Altig Plan intentionally keeps existing two-year rain event capacity main trunk line pipe in place and allows for eight-inch-deep flooding in streets and yards in the upstream half when the upstream half is hit with a major 25-year rain event, declaring that the Altig hydraulic installations will keep that flooding within the streets and within the city's 10-foot right-of-way onto residents' properties. And they conveniently ignore the fact that when another 25- to 50-year rain event hits and drops 1.95 inches in one hour on, on the still existing two-year rain event capacity in the upstream half, the Altig Plan offers nothing to stop another major life, health, and property-threatening flash flood. This city could handle the cost of protecting both the upstream and the downstream from the consequences of an average 25-year rain event by simply installing actual 25-year rain event capacity infrastructure in both halves of the basin, which was the promise to those citizens back in 2019, but that is currently not staff's plan. I can only hope that there are Inglewood citizens listening who do care about the residents in the upstream half of the South Inwood Basin and who also want more for those families than just being intentionally sacrificed to flooding by the CM staff in order to save money. I will be back next city council meeting to discuss staff's intentional continuing inaccurate claims and outright lies concerning the Altig Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Any questions from members of council? Seeing none, thank you for your time tonight. Our next speaker is Chris Cordova, redressing council regarding the standards of behavior policy. Mr. Cordova, if you could please give your, uh, street address or cross streets, appreciate it.
The First Amendment, the First Amendment of the United States Constitution protects the right to access and view legal content. It's important to note, there are also valid concerns about the potential harms associated with unrestricted access to pornography in public spaces. Balancing the protection of individual rights with the need to ensure a safe and appropriate environment in public spaces requires careful consideration of all perspectives involved. I want to create a balance to where we can protect the children while not infringing upon civil liberties. Mr. Ward, I actually saw your personal Facebook post where you were bashing me and making a mockery of me, that's real professional, but you did bring up the 2003 case of the United States versus the ALA, and I, you're not watching my videos because I actually explained that one, and you don't have to watch my videos, but my Inglewood videos have over 2 million combined views, so you guys might want to check that out to see what they're saying about your city, there's a lot of people watching. But that case law allows you to install web filtering software. It doesn't say that you can outright ban pornography in the library, and that would be one way to mitigate it. I'm fine with that. I want it removed from the policy because that policy is full of lies. It's deceitful. You do not have the right to ban someone for constitutionally protected activity. Mr. Anderson, I'm not sure if you're actually listening to me when I'm up here talking because you said this guy wants threats, harassment, he wants everything removed. I don't know if you're not listening or you're just gaslighting the city, because it seems like you're trying to convince them that I want this removed so that we can harass and threaten people. That's not what I said. I said it's a reiteration of laws that already exist. It's patronizing and insulting to tell full-grown adults that we can't threaten people. We know this. If you remove it from the policy, that's not going to give people the green light, hey, guys, we can go harass people in City Hall now. Remember praying, you were the one that told me, thank you for reminding us of our responsibilities to the Constitution, and then you turn around and say, I don't know any case law, but we just shouldn't have pornography in the library. You're basically admitting you have no clue what you're talking about, but I'm going to enforce my feelings. I spend hours preparing these speeches, looking up case law and looking up CRSs so that I can come here prepared to make an intelligent argument. If I had come here the first day and said, hey, guys, I don't know any case law, but you guys just shouldn't restrict body odor, would you have taken me seriously? Remember Russell, you asked if there's a city ordinance that bans pornography in the public library, and if there isn't, there should be, and I see that you're trying to create one. Well, when I say let's create a balance, I don't mean let's make unconstitutional city ordinances. Again, for the third time, government can't follow their own rules. The only person up here with any integrity is Member Wright. What does she say? I believe in the Constitution, and we'll just leave it at that. And I don't want to speak for you, ma'am, because I don't know, but the way I perceive that is that you are a courageous lioness trapped in a cage with Scar and a bunch of hyenas. And it takes courage, and it's difficult to stand up and say, I believe this, no matter who all believes that, and I'm right there with you, so stay strong because this city needs you, and I appreciate your comments that you made on, about public comment. So you guys want to enforce your policy now that says that you must live in the city of Inglewood, and Mayor Sierra, I guess you guys were supposed to work on that last year, right? But now that I'm coming here, now you're going to enforce the policy. And I will never tell you guys my address or my cross streets because I've had my tires slashed, my property vandalized, because people hate me, because I speak the truth, and truth is treason in the empire of lies. And that's a valid reason, and there might be many other people that want to redress their government, but they don't want people to know where they live either. And you know what? I don't live in Inglewood. I live in Denver, and my tax dollars fund your fire department that saves you $18 million a year, but you want to prevent me from coming up here and speaking. I can tell you this, I do frequent a Inglewood city facility several times a week. This standards of behavior policy affects me directly. You don't have to live in the city of Inglewood to be affected by the city of Inglewood. Now, what about homeless people? That wasn't addressed? Are you going to bar homeless people from speaking? They don't have an address, they don't live in Inglewood? And if you do allow the homeless to speak, well, now your policy is no longer viewpoint neutral, is viewpoint discriminatory. Can't say, well, if you're homeless, you can come in, but if you don't live in Inglewood, you can't. This is the stuff that I'm talking about, guys. You guys are supposed to be the experts. I don't know what your city attorney is telling you, but she's the attorney, I'm just a guy that does research, and I don't even want to come back here. You guys are saying that I'm monopolizing public comment. If you see a lot of me, it's because you're doing something you're not supposed to be doing. So I, I don't want to keep coming back, honestly, and I wanted maybe come back here in a couple of months just to check off on stuff, but keep in mind when you're doing your voting on public comment, that it's we, the people, it's not we, the Inglewood.
Thank you, Mr. Cordova. Please refrain, please refrain from applause in the council chambers as this, as this draws attention to one side of you and makes others feel uncomfortable, so we have a policy that we don't applaud or cheer or anything during public comment. Thank you for that. And thank you, Mr. Cordova, for your time tonight. Do we have any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Merriman, Inglewood resident, will address city council regarding, regarding Movement 5280. Thank you for coming, Mr. Merriman. If you could state your address or cross streets.
3211 South Logan Street.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm a little here.
Yeah, you have five minutes to speak. Thank you for coming tonight.
Sure. Um, I'm here to give a shout out for 5280. Basically, I live in a fishbowl, which is 55 yards from the side of the, the building. That's where my kitchen is in the backyard. I see 5280 people all the time. I see homeless people, I see, you name it, gunshots not too long back, but it had nothing to do with 5280 is part of the direction that our society seems to be going. I actually think that there was a big dirt mound out there and somebody stopped.
Mr. Merriman, could I ask you to speak into the microphone? We can't, we're having trouble. Could I ask you to speak into the microphone? We're having trouble here.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Merriman.
Sure. Anyway, uh, before 5280 came, we had the same issues. People were caught sleeping in the neighbor's garage across the street on Logan, the neighbors behind me on Grant Street, uh, there were people sleeping in their garage. We've had a homeless issue for quite some time, but now for the first time, we have an organization this air, and I have to say, it's nice to have somebody to talk to. I've been over there, I volunteered to, uh, do a little, uh, yard work, snowplow, things like that. So I met a lot of the people, they're all seem young and nice, and, uh, they seem like they have a goal, they want to get out there and do things in life rather than, uh, float like a lot of people seem to be happy of doing, staying home at mom and dad's, and it's just good to see that. It's good to have a phone number to call. I have Tina's number and some of the other people there that, uh, if I see something off the wall, uh, we've seen people sleep out there before. Before it was 5280, we've seen a few people, not near as many in my opinion as before. Uh, before 5280, we had people drop off old boats, old cars, old campers, and I haven't seen that since they've moved in because there's cars parked out there, there's people, there's movement, and it's good to see, and the alternative, I'm afraid, that would be if 5280 left, would be another apartment, and we've got a lot of apartments around us. I'm very happy to see an old building, this old style, old brick, and, and good people in it, so, uh, that's all been, um, positive as far as I can see in, in the neighborhood, and it's, I'm happy with it, so, that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Mr. Merriman. If you'll wait here a second, I'll see if we have any questions from members of council. Member Wright.
Thank you. Can you tell me how long the church was empty before Movement 5280 moved into it?
How long what?
The church was empty before Movement 5280 moved in?
It, it wasn't empty per se, the membership just got less and less and less, and there were a lot of old people that were there. We've lived there since 1982, so, uh, 42 years, and it used to be there were a lot of church members there, it wasn't, it was well-done, but as time went on, it just got smaller.
Okay.
To the point where maybe there were a dozen people that went or less, and they did their best. I mean, they would call the police when somebody left something and things like that, but I, I think it's being that there's more people there all the time, it's definitely an improvement, and having somebody there that people can go to, the food bank, the, the programs that they run there, uh, it just seems like, I've, I've talked to people out there before when I was shoveling snow, you remember, or you work here, I said, no, but I can, I have some phone numbers I can call, and usually they're content to just go over and read the numbers and see what kind of help they can get, because there's evidently a lot of people out there that need help.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Merriman. All right, our next speaker is Lori Merriman, an Inglewood resident, will address council regarding Movement 5280. Welcome, Ms. Merriman. If you could give your cross streets or address, we'd appreciate it.
Logan and Eastman.
Thank you. You have five minutes to speak.
Okay, thank you. I just want to share in support of 5280 as well. I have lived in the neighborhood for 42 years. My husband and I bought our house in 1982. I know the neighborhood history pretty well, and if you're one of the older neighbors that are in the area. My family and I attended Inglewood First Christian Church before it became Inglewood Bible Church and now the hub at Movement 5280. I attended Inglewood First Christian Church when I was a baby and throughout my high school years, 1963 to 1980. My parents did all the pageants for the Christmas, Easter, and other gatherings at the church. My parents actively worked on play performances throughout the year there, so we were always out the church and involved in this neighborhood even while I was young. The neighborhood has usually been a quiet neighborhood until the past few years. We have gradually noted the spread of homeless people increasing and trickling into our area. I want to emphasize that this was taking place prior to the hub at 5280, purchasing the building after Inglewood Bible Church sold the property. Some neighbors in our area have grown concerned that the hub at Movement 5280 will attract more homeless, trash, and crime since purchasing the building. We would like to share that prior to the hub opening their doors, we have noted gradual crime incidents and homeless influx increasing since the marijuana law was passed in Colorado and people flooding the area to legally purchase and use marijuana. Additionally, RTD pudding in the light rail stop near Walmart has also provided access for the homeless to migrate into our neighborhoods. Stores such as Hobby Lobby and Big Lots closed in our area due to the rise in theft soon after. Walmart is struggling to keep up with the increased thefts and now has to keep things locked up as a theft preventative. The Neighborhood App has consistent reports of crime events in Inglewood and throughout all of the neighboring cities. Everyone is struggling to deal with the increase in crime which surfaced prior to the hub at 5280, purchasing the property at 3190 South Grant. We have dealt with more trash left on my mother's property by the homeless, which is located close to Cushing Park and the light rail than we have dealt from, with 5280 in our neighborhood. In fact, we have not had any problems with folks leaving trash lying around caused by individuals in the program. We have found trash left by other homeless individuals prior to 5280, purchasing the building, and at times trash scattered due to animals getting to the trash containers. If any trash was left, it was mostly taking place while Inwood Bible Church still owned the property. People were leaving boats, trailers, and cars that the members of the church had to remove by individuals who weren't homeless. Since the hub at 5280 purchased the property, the trash issue has been reduced. People were taking advantage of the church being closed, and with the staff of 5280 managing the property, the trash problem has improved. Some of our neighborhood residents are concerned about theft increasing since the purchase of the property by the hub at 5280. I would like to share that prior to 5280 purchasing the property, my car was stolen, my second car was an attempted theft, and the neighbors across the street from us had homeless people living in their garage. There were also homeless people observed selling drugs on our street corner prior to the purchase of the property. The statement in the letter passed out to the neighborhood residents clearly blames the hub at 5280 for being the cause for safety concerns and an increase of crime and trash being left in the area. The opposite is true. There were issues with crime and safety once the marijuana law was passed. Prior to that, we rarely had concerns of violent crime in our, in our area. Since then, it has increased throughout the metro area, not just in our area, due to the hub at 5280. I would suggest that those who are filing complaints against the hub at 5280 to look at the bigger picture and to focus on the source of the problem. The hub is a tiny part, it was actually taking place in our city. The hub at 5280 are one of the few programs that are actually making the effort to work with individuals who are emancipated from the foster program and become productive, productive citizens in our community. If the building were to be purchased by developers, they would take down the building and most likely replace the church and rezone it for high-rise apartment buildings or triplexes. If the hub at 5280 vacates the building, I would be more concerned with increased crime, drug usage, parking issues for the neighborhood, and trash with the increased numbers of people living in a complex. As a longtime resident of the area, I would prefer to deal with a few homeless people than several hundred people living next door to me, which would be a greater impact on the neighborhood than just the hub at 5280. I believe our opponents in opposition to the hub at 5280 are more concerned with the appearance of homeless people rather than proactively treating the problem by addressing the main attractants. I would encourage our neighbors who are in the opposition to the 5280 program to focus on one of the bigger problems such as the RTD light rail and getting the stop moved to another location so our businesses aren't being impacted by the homeless. If they don't have access to our area, the influx would be less, giving relief to our neighborhoods and our retailers. For our comments which to suggest the hub at 5280 is an attractant for homeless people, then we need to shift our focus on the other things that are of greater concern than the homeless at 5280. I would suggest to those.
Time is up. Thank you for your presentation, and I'll see if any council members have any questions for you. Seeing none, thank you for your time, Ms. Merriman. Our next speaker is Stephen Stanford, here to address council regarding Movement 5280. Welcome, Mr. Stanford. If you could, um, say your address or cross streets.
Mayor, Mayor Protim and honorable council members. I am, uh, an attorney, and I, not here in a legal capacity, but I'm here as a fan of 5280. I have offices at 5280, 3190 South Grant. I live in Aurora. If that disqualifies me from speaking, I would be happy to yield my time.
Yep, we just want, no, you're not disqualified, we just wanted to know where you live, appreciate it. You have five minutes to speak, thank you.
As I said, I'm an attorney. I've practiced law in Colorado for almost 50 years, um, and have attended the church at 5280, uh, for the last couple of years, both on Broadway and now at 3190 South Grant. I volunteer for legal services on Wednesdays there, I attend church on Sundays, I've been there for other special events. I'm, I'm obviously, uh, concerned about, uh, the concerns that have been raised. I would not have an office in a location where I felt unsafe or I felt my clients would be unsafe, and I think that's an important consideration for you to think about. If I thought there was any concern, uh, I, I just wouldn't be there, and I wouldn't be volunteering my time. I'm, I'm very surprised to hear the concerns that have been raised, and I would like to state that I know Tina Hayhurst since she was a junior high student and was with me on a missions trip to Chilchimba, Arizona, and have found her to be, uh, just the most And have found her to be just the most incredible person, a force for good and positive change. The neighborhood should be, feel very good about having a person like Tina and an organization that she leads like Tina in their neighborhood. To my knowledge, the concerns raised to this council are largely unfounded, false or intentional misrepresentation. And I would guess that they are motivated largely by misperceived negative effect on their home values. That's the only thing I can think. First, Fifty-two Eighty is not an acting homeless shelter as alleged, but is a church and a resource center to people that are in need, homeless and otherwise. It should be noted that the church building at thirty-one ninety South Grant has been in existence since nineteen forty-nine. I know how long that is because I was born that year. I don't believe any of the neighbors failed to notice a church in their neighborhood when they moved in. Its existence has not affected their home value. It was there whenever they decided to move into the neighborhood and was an obvious consideration when they did so. Contrary to the misperception created by the raised concerns, Fifty-two Eighty carries on all of its operations indoors in the church building with the exception of portable showers in the north parking lot next to the building, I believe, twice a month. And it's usually on Wednesdays when I have, when I give free legal advice and it doesn't cause me any problems at all that it's going on. In fact, the people that come to see me come in the doors right next to the portable showers. It's discreet and unobtrusive. The implication, I was concerned about the implication that it had, Fifty-two Eighty had somehow had a negative effect on schools in the area, three schools alleged. I believe the nearest school, some fifteen blocks away from Fifty-two Eighty, across Broadway and further on West. So that's the nearest school that I'm aware of to this area. And so the idea that it would be a source of problems to the schoolchildren is kind of silly to me. Fifty-two Eighty is a good neighbor. They strive-
Thank you for your time. Your time is up. Appreciate your comments tonight. Any questions from members of council? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Stanford, for coming tonight. Appreciate it.
And I'll be at the other meetings.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tammy Fisher, an Inglewood resident, here to address council. Welcome, Ms. Fisher. If you could state your address or cross streets, so you'll have five minutes to speak.
Dartmouth and Grant. My name is Tammy Fisher. Thank you, mayor and city council members, for this opportunity to be heard. I'm also the C E O of Metro West Housing Solutions, Lakewood's housing authority, an affordable housing developer and a human services provider. I've been a public servant for thirty years and a public service provider for over forty. I'm familiar with local governance and intimately familiar with the usage of public funds at all levels. I can also speak to successful human services programming, including programs for the unhoused and how they should and can be incorporated into a community through well-planned, transparent activities that embraces the public process of which each of you have taken an oath to uphold. Unbeknownst to me and my family, the Inglewood Church, which is two houses from my home, was privately sold to Fifty-two Eighty. Upon hearing this, I called them to ask how my family could become involved and to hear about what their agency does because their social media didn't state that it was a church. I left messages, but no one had answered. The contract that they purchased it at was a private contract that contained a stipulation preventing public disclosure of the sale and its intended use by Fifty-two Eighty, as it was believed that the neighborhood would shut it down if they found out. This demonstrates a significant disregard for the neighborhood, a blatant attempt at deceit and is indicative of the organization's lack of management. When I called the mayor and city building department, they stated that they were unaware of the transaction or intended use. I'm completely confused by this private sale, knowing that public funds were used to purchase it. It was allowed for a non-public transaction, which I found out later was part of the Tri-County Initiative on Homelessness. Am I to understand that no one in city leadership knew about this? Is this how we embrace public process? Have any of you seen the application that was made for this purchase? Who allowed a purchase with public funds to be hidden from the public? Did you do an impact study before you allowed this purchase and these services coming into a residential neighborhood? What part of responsible city planning says to bring your downtown issues of homelessness into a residential area? Including a commercial restaurant, which had negative impacts on downtown, which now they have guys as just catering. And the same problems that Cafe One, let's see, Cafe One Eighty had downtown is now going to happen in our residential neighborhood. Please tell us the due diligence you and the city staff have done prior to and since this private sale. A core request, we'll answer some of these questions if you can't, but will allow us to scrutinize the accuracy of the information provided to identify potential fraudulent use of public funds leading to possible missteps by public officials. From day one, Fifty-two Eighty's actions reveal a pattern of sneakiness and dishonesty, not only towards the neighborhood, but also to the local laws, such as lack of building permits, providing commercial services and commercial rentals, demonstrated deficiency in professionalism, management, experience and ability to be honest, a true black mark to any service provider in our reputations. The city's leadership must be fully informed about every aspect of this organization and its intent. The situation is egregious abuse of zoning allowances granted to churches. The original intent of allowing churches to provide ancillary services did not envision them becoming full-time service providers. City leadership needs to intervene by creating and enacting ordinances that safeguard the neighborhood and the surrounding residential zoning. In cases where a church exploits its permissible uses, the city should act to protect residential neighborhoods. The city needs to intervene to mitigate the negative impact it's had on the neighborhood, treating it as it does any new development or change of use. Their property is evolving from being a mere church into a full-service agency. Support should be extended to initiatives that serve the homeless population while also maintaining the integrity of family neighborhoods. There are obviously multiple empty commercial retail spaces available that would serve this population better, closer to public transportation, surrounded by grocery stores where they don't walk right past a school to get to the service. For medical care, walking distance to multiple services and plenty of space to congregate in public spaces instead of a private residential neighborhood. This is how affordable housing and unhoused services should be provided, taking the services to where they are and where they can access what they need. This is also how us human service providers can continue to be welcomed and embracing communities, not to mention responsible city planning that embraces inclusivity. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Please refrain from applause. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time, Ms. Fisher. Any questions from city council? I actually have a question, Ms. Fisher. Would you mind? Thank you. Do you have information that Inglewood somehow helped fund this project or pushed it forward or something?
That's what I'm asking. I, when I originally called the mayor and the building department, they were not aware of this purchase. When I told them what I had heard was going on, they were not aware of that. When we called and said they were doing, you know, the building improvements, they went out because they weren't pulling permits. We were informing the city and the mayor what was going on and no one was informing us. And so we're just curious as what other public funds, you know, have been given to them and what kind of public process has been done and what kind of due diligence has been done.
Thank you for your answer. And just for information from members of public, there will be a time for response after we conclude public comment and we'll be able to provide some more clarity on that. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Just to be quite clear, you referenced that there were public funds used in the purchase of the property. What public funds are you referring to?
No, I said, has there been more? That was my question. Has there been more public funds besides the American Recovery Act funds that were used?
And who allocated the American Recovery Act funds?
I'm sorry, what?
Do you know who allocated the American Recovery Act?
That was from the county, Rep. County.
So the only funding that you're aware of is-
And part of the Tri-County Homeless Initiative is what the mayor had told me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Greg Aden, here to address council or Aden. Good evening. If you could give, please give your address or cross streets and you'll have five minutes to speak.
Thirty-one twenty-four South Grant Street. I stand for you as a parent, a man and a husband and also as a neighborhood concerned citizen. We moved into our house at thirty-one twenty-four Grant Street on December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. There's no issues about what it was before. It's what it is today. In the spring of twenty-two, my boys and I were outside pogo sticking when encountered the first impression of the Inglewood police. A male and female officer stopped by our driveway and got out and said, hey, do you mind if we give it a try? And we said, of course, come join us. Sam, my twelve-year-old at the time, was a very good pogo sticker and actually helped one of the officers jump. Long story short, that was our first impression of the neighborhood police officers. And both of my boys said, wow, never seen a police officer do that. This is a great neighborhood. Later that spring, we met the kind man from the Inglewood Bible Church. We introduced ourselves because we had been walking over there to play in their huge parking lot quite a bit. The gentleman, whose name I cannot remember, said, feel free to play in the parking lot as often as you wish, just not during when services are provided. My boys were thrilled. We played basketball, we played wiffle ball, ran our electric cars, skateboarded and played catch. The two boys, twelve, or my two boys, ages ten and twelve, would go to the parking lot by themselves as it's just two houses down the street. Shortly after, the church changed hands and we believed was still going to be a church. According to Fifty-two Eighty's social media, little did we know that was the first from the truth. I tried to explain to my sons the church was being converted into a place which was supporting foster kids who had aged out of the system. But my oldest son and my oldest son was adopted. He thought that was cool. So did I, actually, at the time. Unfortunately, we had to stop playing at the church. We had to stop letting the boys walk anywhere near the church by themselves. Why, you ask? The boys were walking by the church when two men stopped them on the sidewalk in front of the church on the Grant Side Street and asked them for money. They were scared, didn't know, because they didn't have any money and they didn't want to get hurt. We didn't move into the neighborhood to live next to a building that we were afraid of, not even a half a block from our house. We walked, we moved into a neighborhood who had a church. We're actually very proud to say we have a really cool church nearby. That's nothing near a church today. My yex and I drove by the church coming home from school one day and saw four people in the back getting high. I couldn't answer my son's questions because he said, why do people go to a church to get high? I know it's legal, but it's an interesting place to smoke weed. My wife was going out on a walk and accosted by two men who were asking her for money. They followed her past our, the parking lot up towards our house and she continued to walk past the house in fear of them knowing where we lived. We never let our boys walk all the way downtown Broadway because we know that the unhoused situation is a situation all across Denver. But we'd always let our boys walk around the neighborhood. After these incidents, we no longer allowed our boys to walk or bike by themselves. They didn't feel safe nor do we. Approximately three to four weeks ago, and the Inglewood Police Department can verify this story, my son and I were walking home from Safeway. We saw two police cars stop in front of the church on Grant Street, two houses away from where we live. Three officers were trying to deal with an unruly young man. All you can hear was shouting from the young man to the officers and they were doing everything they could to keep him from being a problem. We continued to walk home and stood on the front porch and watched the police officers ask him many times to calm down. Then he got up, ran across the street and tried to get into a house. The officers went across the street, told the young man to get off the porch. He wouldn't. They pulled him to the ground and cuffed him. And I never forget, Brooks asking me, Dad, what's happening to our neighborhood? After Fifty-two Eighty moved into the church and the foot traffic increased greatly at our street, my older son, who didn't feel safe riding his bike or his skateboard even in front of his house, kept asking me, why don't I feel safe here anymore? I couldn't blame him. He stays at his mom's house longer at periods of time and stopped transitioning to our house. Some of you may know Sam took his life last May. As a parent, I'm ashamed of the city with the disregard for the safety of our children, your lack of transparency, action and communication affects us all. The fact that some of you are asking questions about the situation says a lot about what's really going on. Brooks, my youngest surviving son, asked me, Dad, how does this happen? I said, well, it's a combination of things, son. Lack of integrity, accountability in the city council. But I believe as a certified leadership coach, I told him, I think there's just a lack of leadership. And at this time, I'd like to-
Sorry, your time's up, Mr. Aden. Thank you for your time tonight. Do we have any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you for your time. Our next speaker is Tanya Dillard, or sorry, Tanya Diller, here to address council. Good evening, Ms. Diller. If you could state your name, address, cross streets and name for the record. Appreciate it. Then you'll have five minutes to speak.
All right. Thank you for addressing our concerns and taking your time tonight. My name is Tanya Diller. I am a resident of the thirty-two-hundred block of South Grant, where my husband and I have lived for the past two decades. I am here to make you and the city aware of what's really happening in our neighborhood that has been taking place since the hub fully started operating. Movement Fifty-two Eighty, AKA The Hub, opened under the guise of helping aged-out foster kids, which would have been a wonderful cause to support, that we would support. On the other end of our block, we already have the House of Hope, which provides support to women and children facing domestic abuse, child abuse and homelessness. In the twenty years of living here, I have not personally seen any issues with this facility. In fact, many of us neighbors actively donate to this nonprofit as they are a good neighbor. According to their own website, the hub, on the other hand, evidently has transformed into a day shelter for homeless individuals battling substance addiction, which is not at all its original intended use. In addition to that, their plan to acquire nearby properties for the establishment of rehab facilities for men under the age of twenty-nine, merely thirty days sober and recently off the streets with no vetting of prior violent history due to living off-grid. This raises valid concerns for the surrounding neighbors, understandably. The Movement Fifty-two Eighty director herself said that there would be no loitering, camping, drug use or overnight housing allowed. That was a blatant lie because that's all we've been seeing since it's opened. This is not a safe thing to have in the middle of a residential neighborhood full of children between four schools. The hub's proximity to these schools violates the drug-free zone law in Colorado, which stipulates a minimum distance of one thousand feet between drug rehabilitation centers and educational facilities. The hub is nine hundred and ninety-seven feet from Saint Louis Catholic School. The hub is also nine hundred and seventy-four feet from Bishop Elementary School. And it is only nine hundred and fifty feet from Thrive Preschool. So the hub and the Movement Fifty-two Eighty are already breaking the law. I have the nine-one-one call log here for the hub at thirty-one ninety South Grant for all of twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four so far. It went from zero nine-one-one calls in January of twenty-twenty-three to seven total nine-one-one calls in the first seven months of twenty-twenty-three to twenty-six nine-one-one calls in the last seven months since opening. That is a two hundred and seventy-one percent increase in nine-one-one calls. And that's not even including all other calls and police reports neighbors have made about incidences at their personal homes as a byproduct to the foot traffic the hub has brought to our area. You cannot argue with actual data or numbers. I urge thorough consideration of alternative locations for the proposed growth, including vacant commercial buildings on the empty existing or the empty existing rehabilitation facilities to mitigate the adverse effects on our residential neighborhood. Why can't this be done in the empty buildings of Big Lots, Costa Vida? Or better yet, utilize the eight empty homes with twenty-four beds in each already set up for rehabilitation living located close by at Oxford and Federal for this. Those rehab homes were created and used for the exact same purposes for forty years. They now sit there empty and ready to go. Wouldn't it make sense to save the nonprofit some money and move it there? What we want is onsite twenty-four-hour security specifically tasked with addressing loitering, camping and drug use. The financial burden of these security measures- The financial burden of these security measures should not fall upon the taxpayers. Above all, it's paramount to prevent the proposed expansion plan for Cory's House, which is incompatible with current zoning regulations. The neighborhood preservation overlay implemented in 2012 for the 3200 to 3400 blocks of Grant and the 3200 block of Sherman prohibits establishment of group homes in this area. Therefore, an attempt to proceed with the development of Cory's House would directly violate these zoning laws. The unilateral decision-making and disregard for community input exhibited by Movement 5280 in their operations is unacceptable. I ask that you prioritize the safety and well-being of Inglewood's residents, young and old, by addressing these concerns and ensuring responsible urban development practices. None of the individuals on this board, nor any of those in support or involved with an entirety of Movement 5280 live in the surrounding blocks of this location. So it may be hard for you to get a full picture. For a full video or visual, we have a video to play. I don't know if we have enough time. It's one minute if you want to play it. I'd like you to, to ask you, it's what the residents of Grant, Logan, and Eastman are dealing with consistently. While you watch it, I ask you, please ask yourself with all in us honesty, how would you feel if this was suddenly on your street near your children?
Your time's up. Thank you for your time. If you could send that video, email it to the council members or the city clerk. Okay, city clerk has it. If we could, we'll watch that at another time, but thank you for your time. Yeah, we have a question from counsel, Ms. Diller, if you could, if you wouldn't mind coming back up. Member Ward has a question.
You mentioned a 911 call log. Have you also shared that with the clerk? Will you, do you mind providing that to the clerk so that it can be distributed to counsel? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Diller. Our next speaker is Regan Benson, will address counsel regarding when people fear their government. Ms. Benson, if you could state your address or cross streets.
Isn't that a great opening line, when people fear their government?
If you could state your address or cross streets, we'd appreciate it.
When people fear their government, there's tyranny. When the government fears the people, there's liberty. TJ said that. Good stuff. I just want to start with that tonight. I'm going to change it up a little bit. I was going to write a speech, but why bother? Oh my goodness, homeless people, they're everywhere. I mean everywhere. I would just suggest that residents of Inglewood, if you don't like homeless people, move to Denver. Isn't that funny? Isn't it hilarious? All these people standing at this podium here, just telling bald-faced lies. Straight up. And if any of them had any gumption about them, they'd have themselves parked in Judge Jefferson's courtroom. These people are going to jail every damn day, all day long, in Inglewood. As a matter of fact, today, one of the people that Tri-City's homelessness recognized in their publications as getting temporary housing, yeah, he's in jail. Park rules violations, camping, camping in the park. Those darn homeless people, get rid of them! How about the homeless guy that Inglewood left on the bench in front of Kaiser back in January? Do you think any of these folks stopped to help him? Nah, they didn't. I did. If anybody's wondering who I am, I do direct street outreach with the homeless. I go out there and build relationships with these folks and get to know them and understand what's going on with them. And I'm nobody. I'm absolutely nobody. I'm one person. Successfully housing four people in the last year, just myself. While Inglewood residents leave homeless people to die on benches in front of Kaiser. The man had frostbite, hypothermia. He was within hours of dying. I saved his life, not government. In fact, government did the opposite. They showed up, just like all these people want. Government showed up and said, you damn homeless person, get the hell out of here. And they gave him ticket after ticket and left him lay on the bench until he lost his foot. I wonder if any of these folks saw those pictures that we shared a frostbite? Probably not. I've never heard any of these people speak about homelessness in Inglewood or do anything to help. Never. Never seen them out there. If I lived in Inglewood and I lived by 5280, I would be so grateful. I would be exceptionally grateful. But no, we can't have that because we stop homeless people. What are we going to do with them? Put them in jail? No, let's ask the government. Let's ask the government to fix it. I want to give accolades to the city for doing a really nice job in responding to the last storm. We didn't have any serious incidences out there. 5280 is not an overnight shelter. People are not going there to sleep. Tri-Cities didn't fund a dime of that project. In fact, Tri-Cities, we don't have time for that tonight. But as far as Denver goes, and, and you guys wanting to shut down public comment, let me say this. You guys sat there and looked like fools debating with yourselves on how to compromise shutting down public comment. And you forgot one really important thing that I informed my friend here of tonight. This Denver Fire Department relationship you have saves you $18 million a year. Who pays for that? Denver residents? And you, Joe Anderson, don't think Denver residents should have a voice at this microphone? You, too, Chelsea Noonan Camp. You want to limit people to speak every 90 days. Get real. Knock it off.
Any questions from counsel for Ms. Benson? Thank you for your time, Ms. Benson. Gary Kozak is up next, an Inglewood resident to address counsel regarding Judge Jefferson's salary and other issues. Mr. Kozak, if you could state your address or cross streets, you'll have five minutes to speak.
Yeah, Oxford and La Pan. I've lived there my entire life. My family homesteaded it in 1852. To all the people here visiting, thank you for your support. The city council has received notification that it's our constitutional right to clap as long as we don't disrupt, as long as we don't disrupt the flow or create a vital emergency of trying to be hostile. Now, you've been correct there. Going back to my subject, I have been informed, and I can use Cora, I can call the Cora and go ahead and get the exact date. But this body, the city council approved Judge Jefferson's increase in his salary last year. Now, whether it's the staff, city staff that failed to increase it, but you guys have talked about it some. It's really neat, guys. They turned around and our mayor, they reimbursed him $300 on the recall that he took out of his pocket to fight the recall against him. They paid that, but they won't pay the judge here who is here to help represent the people. Yeah, you want to restrict me from coming up and talking. Why? Because I, I come with results. I've given you state law. I've given you county law. You took an oath to uphold these things. Now you're hearing a larger crowd. Speak up, everybody. You can speak up. We did a referendum to stop the Sam's Automotive from building another big apartment house because the traffic can't take it. We're doing circle roundabouts. Did you stop and think, that's a major bike lane? You cannot have a bike lane on a circle drive. You've just increased by 90% the fatality rate of people trying to go around that circle drive on a bike or even walking around it. Oh, but you did a traffic study. Bull, bull, bull. The developer gave you a traffic study, just like Sam's Automotive. It was the developer. It was not the city. And I've come up here more than a dozen times, shown the traffic problems. And you, the city council, are responsible to oversee the city and what they do. You can direct them to do a traffic study, not them telling you what to do. Because what I've sat here and watched was the city manager and city attorney are running you guys like puppets.
Please refrain from applause.
The Inglewood Herald doesn't bother to want to write about the city government violating law after law after law. They allowed that development to go on, and they didn't do a traffic study by their own laws. They had a holiday, President's Day, by charter, they were not supposed to have a meeting. But they did it anyway, even though one council member brought it up. Another council member read it in their bylaws. And what happened? They did it anyway because they don't care about us. And I raise my voice because I'm a football coach. I'm a National Hall of Fame football coach, and I've coached in Inglewood. All right? I'm here to represent you, the people. Go tomorrow night. Let yourself be heard. Don't be afraid to come back in here and let them be heard. And most of all, use your phone to call City Hall. Jam their phone lines. You've got the right to complain, and they're supposed to listen because I took an oath to represent us. If they don't want to listen, we'll have another recall. Because even those three that they had tried to recall come up in six months. And if they don't want to listen to you, I'm already presenting the law. But the Inglewood Herald didn't want to print that. They had to go ahead and print some slanderous garbage. I've had council members up here after I walked out that door make comments about me. One of them sits there and says, I ramble back and forth. I'm a football coach. That's how you coach. And I hope to God you'll look at yourselves and think about what you've done. And thank you all for coming. I'm done.
Please. Please refrain from, and I would also ask the speakers to, please refrain from attempting to rile up the audience. We're trying to have, we have people who have different opinions on these issues. And our goal is to make sure everyone feels welcome and comfortable to speak. So I know people do not feel comfortable with that. Please return to your seat, Mr. Kozak. Actually, we do have a question. Thank you. Member Russell?
Mr. Kozak, would you remind us, when we passed the judge's salary? Because I don't think most of us remember that we did that.
My mic on? See, they turned my mic off. My mic on now? You turned your mic off. All right, thank you. I understand that it was during your budget. I don't know the exact date or anything, but there was a budget hearing on the police department and some of the other funding that you were, other governmental bodies that you were talking about. As I know, because I was a city councilman before in the 80s, that there was a blanket deal going ahead and approving a budget increase. And he was included in that, but for some reason it's been taken out. I don't know what date. I just didn't, I've had the informant give me the fact that it had been done. It had been voted on and approved, but it never took place.
Actually, thank you. We did approve it in the budget. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
See, no more questions. Thank you for your time, Mr. Kozak.
Okay.
Our next speaker is Nicholas Young, an Inglewood resident, here to address city council regarding city policies and Inglewood Police Department's responsibilities to its citizens. Yes, I believe it would. We'll have that mic set up here for you in a second. Mr. Young, if you will state your address or cross streets and name for the record, we'd appreciate it. Then you'll have five minutes to speak.
My name is Nicholas Young. I live at Inglewood Parkway and Floyd. Or Inka and Floyd, rather. Council members, you, most of you will know that, you know, I'm unfortunately a bit of a familiar voice here. And I tend to come when I've got something that is bothering me and is at large with the city. At approximately 4:32 a.m. on the morning of February 26th, my family was awoken by a loud banging at our door. Being a double amputee, I got out of bed and got into my wheelchair. And before I could get across the apartment, I, I stopped cold in my tracks. A loud voice came through the door. I know you're in there. I'm coming to kill all of you and take all of your money. My AUL daughter, Sloan, carefully peeked out from behind the bedroom door, having been awoken by the ruckus. Dad, they asked, are they going to kill us? I assured Sloan that they were safe for now and asked them to hide while I woke my spouse, and I rang 911 dispatchers. Over the next 18 minutes, we were subjected to threats of violence, repeated attempts to knock down the door before the officers arrived. And during that time, dispatch told me the case was not a priority, that officers were busy handling other matters, put me on hold, repeatedly questioned me about being under the influence of drugs and alcohol, and insisted that I was not in a mental state to evaluate the situation. Insisted the attempted intrusion was at an adjacent unit rather than my own. And in a complete moment of terror, I was forced to advocate for myself and the safety of my family. Now, I understand that dispatch is overworked, but attempting to get me off the line during an active crime is poor form at best. And at worst, it's legally culpable to the city. When the officers finally arrived, they took a report from me and my spouse. I was told to expect a follow-up discussion after this. Much to my surprise, all that officers were able to do was to escort the gentleman off the property, which I thought was odd because we were fearing, in fear of our lives just moments before. The assailant did cause a fair bit of property damage. He managed to knock out one of the two deadbolt locks at our property. And between me and you, if the officers hadn't responded when they did, we would have basically been dealing with the assailant in, in our unit. Now, later, I called to follow up on the report that the officers supposedly filed that morning to find that no report had been filed except for a call indicating they had been responding to disturbance of the peace. Now, this, this pretty much, you know, rocked my world because this is not your normal run-of-the-mill noise complaint. And at that point, because I know Chief Watson directly, I asked for an off, an audience with police leadership. At that meeting, Chief Watson admitted to me that that case had been grossly mishandled and that it wouldn't be happening again, that they would get this to the detective and, and finish, finish the case and actually ensure that, you know, this was dealt with. And concerningly, the gentleman who was on my doorstep that morning issuing death threats, he's well-known to the entirety of the Inglewood Police. I can't say his name here, and I can't say the exact words that he was threatening my family with. But suffice it to say that it's discouraging that this person was known to the entirety of the police staff, and they couldn't simply do anything about it. Now, as I sit here, there are multiple outstanding calls to Detective Martinez, who's working on the case, as well as to Chief Watson and multiple people in the EPD. That's been going on for the last month, or the last couple of weeks at the very minimum. I've, I've received no, no follow-up on this case. And that's, that's deeply concerning. I've also called the Rabahoe County DA on Thursday to find out that they don't actually believe it's ever been submitted to their system. And they're, they have no such case in the works. Independently, I've also called and registered myself for the Colorado Victim Notification Service. The Victims Assistance Unit at the Inglewood Police did nothing for us. And through that fine notification, I learned that this gentleman was picked up in Denver a few days after our initial incident. However, I'm deeply concerned because Denver isn't aware of this other case because the Inglewood Police Department and Rabahoe County District Attorney have taken no accident, no interest in this case, and they have not followed up and, and sent it completed. So, you know, there may be a case where this gentleman gets out. It's really common knowledge that basically when the zone officers sign off at a day shift, you know, that basically city center becomes pretty lawless. I can count two major incidents. My family's either lost significant property or was threatened with violence outside of this report in the last month and a half alone. And during my time in Inglewood, I've had far more property stolen from me than when I spent a lot of time in this supposed big, dangerous city of Chicago. I feel much less safe here in downtown Inglewood than I did in the big city of Chicago. And I feel like that should be concerning. I was also planning to lease a office space before all this went down in city center. And now, on the advice of my legal advisors, have decided to back out of that. So I just want to point out that basically all of the...
Mr. Young, your time is up. Thank you for coming to speak tonight. And I'll see if counsel has any questions. Member Wright, and then Member Noonan Camp, and then Member Russell.
Hi, Mr. Young. Did you say this was on the 26th of February?
Yes, that's correct.
At 4:32 a.m.
4:32 a.m. The dispatch call will begin at about...
The dispatch call will begin at about, uh, 4:34, 4:35. I believe that the actual timestamp is about 4:34 and 50 seconds.
Okay. And are you still in the same place you were residing last summer?
Yes.
Okay.
However, as a result of this, my family will be relocating out of city center and possibly out of Inglewood entirely.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I don't know procedure. Can I do a request now that-
We'll wait, wait until council response time for any council requests.
Okay, okay. Um, I'll make, be making some requests. I'm sorry. Uh, one other question. Did, with the door, did you, um, do you need to replace things on your door from the banging or kicking and stuff?
Thankfully, we weren't charged for that. The apartment complex took care of that themselves. I mean, it's really the only thing that I can say has had anyone taking responsibility through this entire incident. But I'm glad that they did. I mean, the city didn't, so, you know, somebody should have taken responsibility.
Okay, okay. All right. I'll be making some requests. Thank you.
Thank you.
Member Nunikamp.
Thank you. Mr. Young, it's good to see you. I'm sorry it's under these circumstances. Thank you for being here. Just to confirm, you spoke with the chief shortly after the incident. Was that the last point of contact you've had with EPD?
I've attempted to have multiple other points of contact with the police department since then, but they've not bothered to return my calls.
Okay, so that's the last time you were responded to?
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much for looking into this.
Member Russell, one more, one more question.
My question has already been asked.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time, Mr. Young.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Robert Stocker here to address council. Mr. Stocker is not here. Our next speaker is Tom Novasad, an Inglewood resident who will address council regarding a flyer left on his doorstep concerning homelessness. Welcome, Mr. Novasad. If you would state your address or cross streets for the record, we appreciate it.
Grant and Floyd.
Thank you.
So the flyer was about, uh, Movement 5280. Just to make that clear. Uh, I've lived in this neighborhood for the last 16 years, and I've seen my fair share of crime, homelessness and addiction. It's been here since before we moved in. When my children were small, we would make a game of counting the empty discarded alcohol containers on the street as we walked home from the elementary school. This was nine or 10 years ago. Excuse me. Last year, while driving my kid to school, we noticed several cops and EMTs chatting at a bus stop on Inglewood Parkway. We found out later via the Inglewood Police Facebook page that the man we saw laying across the bus bench next to the cops had died sometime the night before. A few days later, probably about a week, on the way to school again, we saw this scene repeated, same bench and everything. Um, sorry, I lost my place. Uh, two years ago, a man high on meth stole a car, was being chased by the police. The man ran a red light, T-boned someone, jumped out of his car, ran up our alley, jumped our fence, and somehow made it, made his way onto our roof. He was there for three hours before the cops were finally able to talk him down. My point is, this is not a new problem. Yes, I've noticed an uptick of homelessness during and since the pandemic. But it's not just here. It's all over the metro area and other cities across the country. This is not an isolated problem, but it's a very complicated one. I would think the only solution to this problem is to be pragmatic about it. The Hub. Two afternoons a week, they offer food, counseling, showers, laundry, DMV services, dental care. That's perfect. The problem is already here. I live two blocks from the church, and I haven't noticed any difference, no more than what it has been for years. In fact, I didn't even know they offered these services until I got the flyer about this. That should be encouraging to anyone who's concerned about there being an uptick in crime because of it. I think it's great that they are there and they are where they need to be because this is where the problem is. It's the most logical thing. They want to purchase home. That's great. There's, you know, there's one down at the end of my block. It's called House of Hope. It was mentioned earlier. They are absolutely the perfect neighbors, never a peep in 16 years. Uh, I can't imagine what it's like to be homeless. Nobody chooses to be homeless. Something had to go catastrophically wrong in their lives and have ended, to have ended up on the street. And people shouldn't be judged by that. No illness, addiction, or just, or just the perfect storm of bad luck could put any of us in that situation. Imagine trying to find a job when you have no internet, no ID, a change of clothes, the ability to shower every day, no permanent address, no bank account. The list goes on. It would be very hard. It would be a very hard hole to get yourself out of. But, uh, Movement 5280 is doing exactly what needs to be done by providing assistance with those very things. And proposed housing, great, that means less people on the streets. Besides, we can't just push them out of the neighborhood. It's not helping anyone, and the problem is so pervasive that more people would just move in to take their place. To the person who made this flyer, I mean this in all earnestness. Good for you. You recognize and care about the problem. You are passionate enough to write up and distribute a flower, a flyer. Now let's do something about it. Get your butt in there and help them out. I plan to thank to this flyer. They are fighting the very problem you are worried about. Ask them what they need. Donate money, close your time, do something. This is a problem that unfortunately will never go away. But the only real solution is to roll up our collective sleeves and do the hard work. The community is a powerful and great resource. And I encourage everyone to support Movement 5280 and whatever they need done. Please don't try to push them out or restrict them in any way. They're doing what needs to be done in the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Novasad. Let's see if we have any questions from council. Seeing none, thank you for your time tonight. Our next speaker is Kristen Vitale, an Inglewood resident here to address council regarding the impact of 5280, the Hub. Oh, sorry, I missed one. My apologies. We'll be back to you. Next one is Ben Olson here to address city council regarding his experience living near Movement 5280. Welcome, Mr. Olson. If you could state your address or cross streets, and then you'll have five minutes to speak.
Uh, my address is 3177 South Grant Street. It's, uh, Eastman and Grant. I live on South Grant Street facing the west side of Movement 5280. And I came here tonight to share about our experience living across the street since they moved in. Uh, when we first got word of who was moving in across the street, I would say we were definitely apprehensive, as a lot of people were, but thought we should try our best to reserve judgment since the services they provide for people are obviously needed. Um, we contacted them as soon as we started to see cars at the building to set up a meeting, to hear about what they do and what their plan is for the neighborhood. We met with their community outreach director at the time and were underwhelmed with the thought and planning that were put into the new space, but also made to feel like we were off-base by having concerns. Um, "I'm sorry you have reservations about this, and these people are harmless. You could probably push them over if you wanted to," were exact quotes that were said to us. Uh, "My wife and I," um, my wife, who's, uh, getting a degree in, in, uh, social services right now, were taken back by that. I just want to step back and say that I believe that many things are true in this complicated situation. It's true that there's a huge need for Movement 5280 and the services they provide. But it is also true that providing these services in our neighborhood is dangerous to the people who live here. And I would never use that word dangerous until an experience that I had on January 29th. A man had been laying in the grass across the street all day, and we wondered to ourselves if anybody was going to help him or if we needed to try and call somebody. In the late afternoon, we were in our kitchen getting ready to celebrate my daughter's second birthday when two employees came out of the building and talked to the man. A few minutes later, a police car showed up and the two officers went and talked to the man. Eventually, a police officer helped the man to his feet and sent him on his way. The two officers' employees watched as the man walked across the street to the sidewalk in our yard. The man, who was clearly mentally unstable based on what he said to us, looked into our house from the sidewalk and after seeing us inside, started to walk down our front path to our front door. He started knocking on the door and looking in through the glass panes of our door and seemingly trying to talk to us. At this point, the officers across the street came over to get him and started to make, and I started to make a move to make sure that the door was locked. When the officers got close to the man, he started trying to open the door to our house. And I had to send my five and two-year-old daughters downstairs with my parents to make sure they were safe. The police officers ended up getting the man on the ground before he could get into our house, and an ambulance was called. We had to wash the man's blood off our sidewalk as we got ready to celebrate our daughter's second birthday. The reason I feel unsafe is because I realized that even with two of their employees and two police officers watching, dangerous situations like this can happen and did happen. I have no idea what I, um, sorry, I have no idea what I would have done if the police officers were not there. To their credit, I have said all this to Movement 5280, and they have since, um, had a dialogue and apologized. But we have had other incidents with people hanging out outside the building, such as obscenities being yelled, sometimes at people, sometimes not, and people sitting in their cars all day outside of our home. As I said before, I think their services are much needed, but I also think it's clearly inappropriate to have a homeless ministry in the middle of our neighborhood. I'm sure that Movement 5280 is doing their best, and I think that the services they provide are important. However, the issues of mental health that they're dealing with are clearly unpredictable. And telling the neighbors to call the police if they see someone sleeping outside the building or putting up lights outside the building are not fixes for this unpredictability. We've never had to call the police prior to, to Movement 5280 being across the street. And we've had to call, uh, I think, three times since then. When I look at the total picture, it's obvious to me that they provide a great and much-needed service, as I mentioned, um, to people, but that the consideration for people around them who live in the neighborhood is lacking. I don't know what can be done, but I know that this current situation feels untenable and unsafe, and I ask for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. See if we have any questions from council. Seeing none, thank you for coming to speak tonight. Thank you for your time. Our next speaker now is Kristen Vitale, Inglewood resident and here to address council regarding of Movement 5280 and the neighborhood's well-being. Good evening, Ms. Vitale. If you could state your address or cross streets for the record, and you'll have five minutes to speak.
Yes, absolutely. My name is Kristen Vitale, and our cross streets are Eastman and Grant. And I have been homeowners and residents of the Inglewood, um, since 2005. So we have observed and been a big part of the revitalization of the neighborhood. I also work locally in Arapahoe County Public Schools and at Swedish Medical Center. And my husband has also worked at Craig Hospital and Public Schools as well. So we obviously are, dedicated our lives to the welfare of people in our community. So I will be highlighting the concerns and inquiries that have come to unfortunate fruition following the email I sent at the beginning of June and early July to this council in Arapahoe County. You're getting a copy of this now of both the correspondence. I need to note that, um, Warren Gully did respond to me, but I did get zero response from the council from this email in the summer. So the first part, when I corresponded with Carrie Warren Gully about the funds that were reported to fund, to basically support this acquisition, she stated that it was from the American Rescue Plan. There's also a copy of that for you. To me, it looks like the funds are, that were allocated, there's a mismatch. From working in public schools, I saw that the funds that we received, we use exactly for this function. So I'm citing my concern of poor transparency about the purpose of funding, which appears to be executed on false pretenses and apparent lack of appropriate permits and business plans per my research of Movement 5280 online and the review of the Inglewood permit system. In addition to personal observations of no signage and crews working before any permits were issued, in addition to poor processes with work execution at times, like during asbestos removal. We also questioned work that does not seem to align with the permits seen online now. So it left us with questions of processes. And I do have pictures and records showing permits were not acquired and posted at this time. The first permit was in August. I wrote this email in June. So, um, Carrie did share, again, that these were accessed through American Rescue Plan. And she said that after, and that this was allocated to help people basically avert, um, eviction from their homes, staying in their homes and job loss during the pandemic. And so I just wanted to bring that to our attention again. It does not appear that they are allocated to develop a church or a treatment center. So that is, that was my takeaway. And she also said that after their stage one review, it was all in Inglewood's hands. So we turned to the town. So we had written it, um, I had written a email in the early summer and stated concerns and anxiety over the lack of transparency of the church into a center for youth that may have social, emotional and maladjustment challenges or aged-out foster care children under the guise of a church mission. We have since heard no evidence that this service has been implemented, but rather have seen what everybody has described. Food bank offering, externally connected church with a scatter of services, recovery services offerings, shower, washroom, and the allowance of homeless adults to stay in vehicles, a building or camp onsite, no matter what the weather or time is. Again, this does not seem to align with the intention of dispersed funds or the mission. So, um, again, on the next section of the pair of my email, I cited concern with the building processes. I just wanted to make the point that we did a very major renovation to our home, and we had to involve neighbors, evict major signs, leave them posted for days, leave our permit up. And if we had not have done that, the work would have been stopped. So I did not notice any permits posted during this period of time for most of the time. So it just seems like there's been overall disregard with the compliance of codes and safety. Um, I also asked many questions in this email regarding the consideration of the comprehensive community plans, traffic surveys, infrastructure accommodations in alignment with proper zoning and social services support for safety and wellness that everybody has reiterated tonight. Of course, I didn't hear back, so there, I did go to some meetings with the mayor with our neighbors, but there have been no answers to this. And all of these issues have been described and have come to light, and processes have not been followed through or attended to. And then regarding what Ben just referenced, safety, comfort and value, we did state our concern for safety, comfort and value of our neighborhood. We had a neighbor next to the church sell his house at a large loss to preserve the safety of his family. The new occupants of this property reported recently seeing crack pipes and needles while playing basketball in the parking lot. And, um, a good friend of mine who has commuted Logan for like almost two decades asked me what was going on, saying that she saw people that were camping in vans exiting multiple times as she does her daily commute. So, um, I just want to reiterate these. I see that the light's on yellow, and I want to request that. Sorry.
Sorry, thank you. Thank you for your time, Ms. Vitale. Sorry, I got your name wrong. Do we have any questions from council members? Seeing none, thank you. And, um, that concludes scheduled public comment. We will now move on to recognition of unscheduled public comment. Same rules and policies regarding unscheduled public comment. The only difference is you only have three minutes to speak. We have a list of people here signed up to speak tonight, so we'll move on to that. Our first speaker is, um, Mark Wakefield here to speak about the Hub. Mr. Wakefield, thank you for coming tonight. If you could state your address or cross streets for the record, you know, five minutes to speak or three minutes to speak.
My name is Mark Wakefield, and I live on the corner of Eastman and Grant. Now, I was born and raised here in Inglewood, lived here all my life, minus some college and military days. My mom and dad still live in the same house I grew up in. I attended all the Inglewood schools here. We had Charles Hay, Washington Elementary, whenever it was still a school, Flood Middle School, Inglewood High School. So I love Inglewood very much. But I have some concerns about what I see changing in Inglewood. It's been implied that those of us that are concerned about the changes don't understand or not compassionate or not willing to, uh, look at the big picture. And I'd like to say that's not true. I've been involved my entire life with service in the military, in the communities, in the church with youth. And we find many ways to help. But just because you find many ways to help people succeed, to get past a hard time in their life, doesn't mean that we should have to allow our neighborhoods to potentially go downhill and give up our neighborhoods to crime, unruliness, trash, drug paraphernalia, all of which I've started pulling out of my yard since 5280 opened. I've lived in my house across the street for 17 years, and we've never had very many issues. I have a bicycle in my backyard that somebody threw over my fence. And I gotta figure out, what the heck do I do with this? It's not mine. I get that one back over the fence. But then, what do I do then? Now, then, now I'm cluttering. Now then, now I'm cluttering, right? My mother-in-law, she has Parkinson's, she's moved in with us so we can provide her care. And it's very important for her to be able to get outside, get sunshine, get exercise, and move around and stay active. And with the changes in the neighborhood, she's scared to get out of the house. So some of the benefits of being with us and benefits of having the help that she needs, she can't take advantage of it now. I do travel a lot. When I leave, my wife is in fear when I'm gone. Our house gets locked up right in Fort Knox because we're concerned about the unexpected things that may happen with individuals that might be struggling mentally or might be on drugs or whatever, because it happens, right? I believe in helping people and I do believe they have a good mission. But the question is, is that mission in the middle of a neighborhood with kids surrounded by schools the right place to have that kind of a mission? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wakefield. See no questions from council. Thank you for your time tonight. Our next speaker is Isaac Smeltzer, here to speak about Movement 5280. Welcome, Mr. Smeltzer. If you could state your address or cross streets, you have three minutes to speak.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Proton. Council members, thanks for having me. Isaac Smeltzer, I live right at the intersection of Grant Street in Dartmouth, less than half a block from this. I have nothing formal prepared tonight. I found out about this from the flyer and also from people who have fire sale their homes next to the property. I have two young children. It's not safe for them to play in the front yard anymore. This is a distinct violation of the comp plan, zoning ordinance. And I would just say this, if you guys are ready for class action lawsuit, allow this to proceed.
Mr. Smeltzer, we do have a question from council. We have one question from a council member here.
Are you under the impression that the council is voting on changing zoning?
I don't think you guys are aware that this was actually a change in use. It's not, it's not afforded in the comp plan. It's not afforded in the zoning ordinance for the area. So I'm just confused how someone can buy a church, change the use, renovate, and not have the permits or support from the city. You asked the question, how long did this church sit vacant for? So clearly you guys are unaware of what's happening.
And how long did the church sit vacant for? Do you know?
I'm not sure. We bought in 2018. I would say the church has been there since, I mean, I don't know how long it was dormant, maybe, I don't know, I have no idea.
And are you aware?
We are members of the church.
Are you aware if 5280 has church services?
They do not. Is there a Sunday service?
Please, please refrain from reacting, audience.
Okay, I'm not aware of the details. All I know is that my truck was stolen less than a month after they moved in, quickly turned into a meth lab, there are needles in her back alley. My wife has been approached multiple times by men getting in and out of her vehicle. It's no longer safe.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Our next speaker is, not sure of the last name, can't quite read it. The first name is Rachel, here to speak about the hub. Good evening. If you could give your full name and address or cross streets for the record, you all have three minutes to speak.
Yeah, my name is Rachel Bakker. Cross streets are Logan and Eastman. I live with my fiance directly across from 5280. I don't know much about the hub at 5280, but I just want to echo my neighbor's sentiments and express concerning observations I've had since the hub opened. There's definitely been an increased police presence there. I would say at least once a week, there's police in the parking lot. I'm not sure necessarily why they're there, if there's been an incident or if they're just there knowing that it's been a frequent crime area lately. There was someone car camping in front of our house for a few days recently, probably last month, and then eventually moved across the street and then was, I guess, moved on. A day after that, we hadn't experienced that before. There's been a lot of people, obviously, loitering in the parking lot, people clearly on drugs or shouting, just generally unsettled pretty frequently out in the parking lot. We live across Logan, so there's actually a shed in the parking lot and there's a picnic table there, which is kind of this smoking area where people hang out quite a bit. One day, there was a homeless man with a mattress there and we thought that was interesting. It was right next to a dumpster and then the next, that night, he slept there and I think maybe for another night before he moved on. The biggest concern I have is regarding an altercation that I witnessed, I think it was a Sunday. This was a few months ago. There were a lot of young people, I would say probably in their twenties, men and women, a lot of yelling, screaming. I watched one large man push a woman. I had a couple of friends over and we locked the doors, drew the blinds, hid underneath like windows, and maybe this is an overreaction, but it felt like the kind of situation where a weapon might come out. Now, to my knowledge, I don't think, there were no gunshots or anything, so I don't think anything like that happened. The police showed up and seemed to take care of things, but it was really concerning. I'm a healthcare professional. I work 6:00 a.m., I work at midnight, so I'm frequently leaving and coming home in the night. And I park in the alley and I have just grown increasingly afraid and feeling unsafe going to and from work. I don't have any solutions to offer, but I just want to communicate how my perceived safety in the neighborhood has changed since the opening of 5280.
Thank you, Ms. Bakker. Any questions from council? Yeah, Member Prang.
Thank you. Just a quick question. You stated that there was an individual with a mattress sleeping in the dumpster. Was that just an overnight or was that multiple nights that you?
One for sure, maybe two.
Okay. All right, thank you.
One more question here, Member Russell.
So was it, the dumpster was in the church parking lot and they were sleeping in the church parking lot or?
Yes, there's, so there's like a shed and there's a dumpster next to it and there's a picnic table where people most days, not so much since it's been cold, but most days that people are out there smoking generally and just kind of hanging out. And that's where this was.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Our next speaker is, I'm not, not clear on the name here. It looks like Gina Shimiel, maybe? Please correct me on the name and then give your address.
You're really pretty good.
Thank you, thank you. Give your address and cross streets and you'll have three minutes to speak.
I am not an Inglewood resident. I am a practicing lawyer and I have been a practicing lawyer in your jurisdiction for over, since 1988. And I just wanted to share that I agree with a lot of things people are saying. I would just like the council and everyone here to understand, this is your community. It is people who are living here in your community. We are not all fortunate to be housed. Many people have become unhoused at exponential rates during COVID. I will share that I work solely with a lot of people with mental health issues. And during COVID, when so many of our providers stayed safely at home, and I understand that, 5280 was there for so many individuals and ventured out in the height of COVID. And I think that needs to be recognized even now, what's going on. There are major groups, our individuals who are aging out, and I don't know if you know and most people in this audience know what that means. These are people, these are children who have been victimized by their relatives, their families, and have ended up in foster care system. And they hit the magic age of 18 and our system closed the books on most of them. And that's what aging out means. And they become homeless in their community when they have no house, they have no family members. This is who 5280 does and they stay with them until they get older and they even reach out to other parts of the community, your community, where there isn't services. Is it easy? Absolutely not. And we need to look at trying to solve such a problem. And some of the comments you had heard about the ARPA monies, this is exactly what the ARPA money is for. If you look at the federal legislation of how the money came to Colorado, it was for the most disproportionately affected by COVID. And those are individuals who are homeless. Mental health is the most undiscriminating, discriminating against individuals who have it. A lot of us have the fortune to have family members who have homes, to take care of that person in need. Individuals who do not have that, family members, just like our age-out youths are on the streets. One of my jobs and one of my passions has been, I'm a volunteer on the Naomi Law Line and I hear parents who are seniors with adults with severe and persistent mental illness just begging for help. They don't know where their loved one is because of their mental illness and others who just don't even know. This is our community. We need to reach out and address all of them. We can't sit here and say, point our finger at, oh, this is bad, this is bad, or this affects my home.
Ms. Shimiel, your time is up. Thank you for your time tonight. Do we have any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you for coming out tonight. Our next speaker is Tracy Brummett, here to speak regarding Cafe 180. Welcome, Ms. Brummett. If you could give your name and address or cross streets for the record, you all have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Tracy Brummett. I'm not a resident of Inglewood, but I work for Cafe 180, which is at the corner of Broadway and Floyd. And I just wanted to first clarify some things that were written in the letter that weren't correct and just, and Cafe 180, it stated that they had closed our doors. We have not done that. We are still open Monday through Friday, 11 to 2:00 p.m., so I just wanted to clarify that. We have made some changes to our operations. The letter also said that we cited drug use, violence and crime as being the reason for closing our business, which is also incorrect. We have shifted our model and we are providing, it also said that we were, the main distribution of all of our food was to the hub. We shifted all our food over there. We are supporting the hub and other, many other nonprofits. We provide 100 meals to the hub on Wednesdays, but we also support other nonprofit organizations. And we also believe that everyone deserves to eat great food, so we are serving everyone in the Inglewood community. But I also just want to resonate with what Ms. Shimiel said, that this is our community and I believe that it is going to take a concerted effort of all of us coming together and having healthy dialogue and working together to serve those who are most in need. And that is what our society has always needed to do, our government, our people, our churches, our nonprofits. And the hub is part of that solution and it's certainly not a perfect solution, but give me an example of a perfect solution to the situation we are facing today. I just want to honor the fact that they are working to do things and I think they are open to conversation and to dialogue of ways of doing it better, just as we are and I am as an individual. So that's all I wanted to say and I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Brummett. We do have a question here from Member Russell.
So you're still cooking at Cafe 180. You're not cooking at 5280?
No, we've never cooked at 5280, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker is Kelly McCloskey, an Inglewood resident, here to address council. Ms. McCloskey, if you could give your name and address or cross streets for the record.
Kelly, Kelly McCloskey, District 4. I'm here to read a letter on behalf of one of my clients that I navigated with. His name is Alex. He says, "A few years ago, a friend told me about Movement 5280. I was homeless, had no family to help me. I went to Movement 5280. I was able to get some clothes and take a shower. They helped me get my food stamps so I could get food. They helped me get signed up for housing. They helped me find a doctor because I have mental illness. I'm on, I'm on my right medication. I meet every Tuesday with the mental health counselor at 5280. I volunteer at their food bank. They have become my family. The most exciting news is, two months ago, I got my own apartment and today I started a new job. Movement 5280 helped me furnish my whole apartment. They helped me so much." And I also wanted to speak about one of our clients that had come out of the foster system and Movement 5280 was there for him. His name, we refer to him as Big Ben. He's an author now. He wrote the book Gus. It's on amazon.com. If anybody wants to buy his book and support him, I think that's awesome that he's writing his second book now. Would this have happened if somebody wouldn't have been there for him? He has nobody. He comes into Movement 5280 on Sundays. He runs a sound system for Movement 5280. I mean, I, he refers to Ms. Tina as a mom. I mean, it's a, he refers to us as a family. And I just think what Movement, I'm a volunteer there. I volunteered there for four years now. I've never felt in danger there. I've, I've just reached out to the community and wanted to do something to help. I seen a need for this. And like I said, I stepped up and said, okay, I'll check out places. And I started volunteering at places around the community. And Movement 5280 is one of them. And like I said, this place is amazing. I will continue to volunteer there, never have felt threatened there and think it's an amazing place.
Any questions from council for Ms. McCloskey? Seeing none, thank you for your time, Ms. McCloskey. Our next speaker is Mike Stevens, here to speak regarding 5280. Welcome, Mr. Stevens. If you could state your name and address or cross streets for the record.
Mike Ste, well, Mike Steven, Majesties Washington and Hampden. I was homeless. I was one of those people all of you neglect. These people helped me find a place to live, helped me get a job and partially recover from alcohol. This is my family. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Thank you for coming to speak tonight. Any questions from council? Member Wright? If you could state, Mr. Stevens, we have one question for you. Thank you for your patience.
And I'm sober, that's why I have the shakes usually in drinking at this point.
Just take a deep breath, you're doing great. How long ago did you become housed?
Two and a half years ago. And I was homeless for five years. Kelly actually went with me to, she was vouched for me on the application.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Stevens. Our next speaker is Tina Hayhurst, here to speak regarding 5280. Please, please refrain from applause. Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Hayhurst. If I, if you could state your name and address or cross streets for the record.
My name is Tina Hayhurst. I am the executive director at Movement 5280, pastor of Lost and Found Church, which is at Movement 5280. I state our mission. Our mission is a unique focus to be a family of support for at-risk and unhoused youth and young adults. Additionally, as a recovery community organization, we embrace a holistic approach, offering individualized, long-term support irrespective of age. Our commitment is to create a nurturing and inclusive community that recognizes the inherent worth and potential of every individual. I just want to share, I'm actually thankful that people have come and shared, especially I, I would say people like Ben, who I've met once, that would, that would share and also reach out to Movement 5280. So I've met two of the neighbors that have shared, as well as two of the members that have shared on behalf of Movement 5280 that volunteer. And I would, I would just share that I believe we have more in common than we do differences, that all of us want to see less homeless, that all of us want to see less crime, that all of us want to be safe, that we're mothers, that we're grandmothers of grandchildren. I am a mother as well, a grandmother of a two-year-old. I appreciate the comments and I would say that we do better when we work together and when we would be willing to knock on the door or ring the doorbell or make a phone call or what Ben did, which I appreciate his concern, and call us or email us and let us respond. I believe that homelessness is super complicated and I believe we're entering more of a crisis where people will be unhoused, where there will be immigrants that will come and, and there will be stronger and more issues that have to do with homelessness and crime and all of those things. And I believe that the people And I believe that the people that stand here that I actually asked not to come, because I felt like it would be overwhelming, my friends that have been transformed by God because of Movement 5280, and speaks on behalf, that I would say that God is a work, alive, and God is changing lives. And I stand adamant that we work together to solve a homeless crisis that I believe that we are all part of, because it's here in Inglewood, it's in Denver. And what are we going to do about it? My answer is, I'm going to love, 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 and I'm going to walk alongside people that are having a difficult time, and I'm going to work to change the world. That's all I know to do. And I encourage people to come and call me, 303-870-3772, that if you want to talk to me and have complaints, talk.
Ms. Hayhurst, your time is up. Let's see, if you'll wait a second, we do have questions from members of council. Member Russell?
Thank you. Thank you for coming, Ms. Hayhurst. I greatly appreciate it. I just would like for you to tell the group how the property is registered, or how it was purchased. And, and then also, I would like for you to answer the question, have you done any remodeling in the church without the proper permits or whatever?
Absolutely. So Movement 5280 has been existence for 14 years. This is our fourth place, the only place that we have purchased. We asked for a grant for Arpa funds, and we also, at the same time, asked Inglewood Bible Church if they were selling their facility. They said no. We had no money. We did not think we would have an opportunity to get that. I called and asked them if they would consider having a food bank on property. They said no. But just so you know, we are thinking about selling Inglewood Bible Church. And the day before we were to meet them, we had a call that said that we got $1.5 million from ARPA funds from Arpa County that we had asked for. Part of those funds had to be used for Corey's Housch, which we would like to be, build a single-family model home for age 21 to 29-years-old men. We're men, we're talking about six to eight men in a supervised living. I'm not sure where the other information came from, because it's, it's not accurate, but that is how we received the money. The, the cost of the building was 2.2 million, and we received 1.5. We used 1.4, and we pay a mortgage on the rest. The question about if we've done remodeling, we have done painting, we have got rid of lots of trash that was in the building, and we, I think the first week we were in the building, we received a complaint that we had not been by permit. Then we, we had the fire marshal come because of a complaint. We're talking about the first week we were in there, we received complaints for those things. We have been very careful to work with the City of Inglewood on those things. We had asbestos spill that cost us $120,000, cost us from six weeks from being in the building, and we had to completely vacate. At that time, we wanted to meet with the city, we wanted to meet with the people and ask them to, to come and see the building and have conversation, and so we have done that. Does that answer your question? I'm sorry.
So you've not really done anything without proper permits?
No, no. And when we, when we had done something with the, there was something with the ceiling tile that we removed that, that actually probably caused the concern about asbestos, and, and really, we had no idea. Like, we had, we had literally no idea that there was this issue, and it cost us $120,000.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other?
Member Wright? Then we'll go to Member Noon Camp.
Thank you. Can you tell me when you purchased the property, and then when you opened your doors?
Yes, we purchased the building in the end of March, so one year ago, and we were ready to move in immediately, and we wanted to move in immediately, and started moving things over. We, just so everyone is aware, that we had a non, we were asked not to communicate with, Inglewood Bible Church asked us to not, not communicate until we purchased the building, that we were in fact purchasing the building. As far as their congregation and for the safety of, or security, I don't even want to say safety or security, I apologize, for the, their sake of their church congregation, they asked us not to communicate those things. And I believe to our best of our ability, we did that until, until we signed those agreements in March. And then we had the asbestos spill immediately, had to vacate for six to eight weeks, and then we got back in and, and started doing church and Movement 5280 in June.
Okay, so are you a 501(c)(3) under a church, or under a charity, or both?
We are both. We are nonprofit, 501(c)(3) under Movement 5280, as well as Lost and Found Church. We are a compassionate ministry center of the Church of the Nazarene, and we are a lost and found church. We actually have over 100 people who attend our church services on a Sunday.
Okay, fantastic. And one more question. I heard one of the speakers say something that tri-cities, and tri-cities is different to different people, but tri-cities to Inglewood residents most often is referred to Inglewood, Littleton, and Sheridan. Has any money come from the tri-cities group towards Movement 5280 as far as establishing Movement 5280? Okay, thank you so much.
Member Noon Camp?
Thank you for being here tonight. You mentioned that some citizens have reached out to you with some of their concerns. Can you share a little bit about how you're addressing those concerns, and what maybe new policies or practices you're putting into place to mitigate some of the challenges that the neighborhood's experiencing?
Yeah, absolutely. So one of the things is that we have a young program, a young adult program, where we hire about, have about 20 people in our job readiness. And so always on staff are three young people, as well as our staff. This morning, I got a call from one of our young people that's been part of our group since they were 15, and, I mean, sorry, 17 or 18, and they are now employed by us, and said, there's a car in the parking lot, and I don't know whose it is. And so I get those calls every once in a while from our people who are very concerned if a, if a camper is on the parking lot, if a car is on the parking lot, which I've heard, that we aren't aware of, we're, we're immediately notified. I immediately got a text this morning, said, there's an unusual car. And I said, is someone living in it? And they said, no, someone's not. And so we are in communication daily on issues that go, and I would encourage conversation to see how the neighborhood can work with us to, to help in those issues. When we heard about the mattress, we, I contacted a person I work with, and, and we worked to get that. What happens is that people dump their trash, and people are constantly dumping their trash in our parking lot, and I'm sure that that's a worldwide problem that happens, and so we have to address that. And so, yeah, if I was unhoused and saw a mattress on the ground, I would probably sleep there as well. I'm just saying.
No, I appreciate it.
That's what I would do.
Thank you.
And so we got rid of the mattress.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, can I, can I ask another question? So you do not allow illegal activities in your building?
Absolutely not. We are a drug-free zone.
Okay.
There, there is some misconception that we have a 420 church in our building that is a church, and can I just say that that does not mean that they smoke marijuana in church? That's something that I've heard. I just want to be really clear that the 420 church is based on the scripture in Ephesians 4:20, and they are housed in our church. We are a drug-free zone. People come that are drug addicts, people come that, that have been high, and we ask them to leave for the day. People come that are drunk. Sometimes I have stopped and watched someone leave the parking lot and seen the police with them, which I appreciate, and walked beside them until they were out of the neighborhood.
And if, if there is a dangerous situation, you call the police department, correct?
Absolutely, 100%. Probably some of the calls that have increased are because we have called.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Yeah, and I, I just want to say on that, that I appreciate all health who will work with the police department and the PATH team that helps us to deal with mental illness that's a serious issue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, Ms. Hayhurst.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bella Lucero, here to speak regarding 5280. If I got your name wrong, please correct it, and state your address and cross streets for the record.
Hi, my name is Bella Lucero, and I'm a recovering addict. I went to 5280 four years ago as a volunteer. I'm now a peer navigator, and I have seen a lot of good come out of there, a lot of love. So I worked with a lady, and she wrote a statement. She said, "I am one and a half years recovering from a four-year stretch of homelessness. I appreciate the location of the Lost and Found Church and Movement 5280. They provided resources and support I needed during this adjustment. I've been able to utilize assistance navigating applications since I am not computer savvy. The people are friendly, patient, and most helpful. I like my haircut and seeing the dentist. I'm excited to be getting my broken partials repaired and return soon. Lost and Found Church is my go-to place, my safety and comfort in a warm meal. This is an ideal place that meets many needs in this area to serve the people that need it most. Homeless people are in every direction, and not everyone can get from one area to another for certain services. Not all homeless people are criminals, drug addicts, or alcoholics. I was simply a grandmother, working and raising grandkids when she lost mobility in her arms and ankles and could no longer work. That led her into homelessness. Broken lives take time to mend. 5280 is a starting point and community place, a food bank, a Bible study, a place for young people to come out and hang on a Friday night and just be themselves. So I would say, if anybody really had a problem, please come and visit. Come and see what we do. It's amazing. It's, it's, it's a wonderful thing. Wednesdays are our most busiest, because that's our resource day, but I would encourage anybody to come.
Thank you, Ms. Lucero. Any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you for your time tonight. Our next speaker is Shirley McChesey. It looks like, maybe I got that right? Thank you for the correction. Good evening, Ms. McChesey. If you could state your address or cross streets for the record.
Yes, I'm at Dartmouth and Galapagos, west of Broadway. I have been, I've raised my kids in Inglewood, and I love Inglewood. My children went to Bishop Elementary, Cherry Lynn, Sinclair. Inglewood is really the best. I will have to say that there have been a lot of changes. I am married now to a, I'm, first of all, I'm 80-years-old. My husband is 92, has lived in Inglewood for, oh my gosh, all his life. And, and he, he and I volunteer at 5280. I have volunteered there for 12, ever since we opened, all four locations. I love it. I absolutely love 5280. It's the only place I can go where everybody, the minute I walk in the door, they run and give me hugs, they call me grandma, they, they love me and I love them. They, I don't care what age they are, I don't care what they have done in their past. Most of them have been at risk all of their lives, as I was as a young child, so I can really relate to them. It is a safe place. If an 80-year-old and a 92-year-old can walk into that place, day in and day out, it is safe. We have an older group of ladies that come and quilt, and I, they feel totally safe there. We have another elderly homeless lady that comes with her little dog, you know, what do you call them, you know, what do you call them? Service dog, service dog. Anyway, everybody feels safe there. We have no complaints. We are loved, and we love on our clients and our neighbors. We would love to have them come and check us out and see firsthand what we're all about. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Let's see, are there any questions? Thank you. I don't see any questions for you. Thank you for your time, Ms. McChesey. All right, our next speaker is Amaya Estes, here to speak about 5280. Good evening, Ms. Estes. If you could state your address or cross streets for the record.
I do not live in Inglewood. I work at Movement 5280. I've been a part of Movement 5280 for 14 years. I was an aged-out foster kid. When I turned 18, I got dropped off at a homeless shelter downtown and told to have a nice life with no skills and no family. I found Movement 5280 when I was pregnant and still a teenager and still homeless, and they provided me a support system that I very much needed and that I hadn't had my entire life. They walked with me through becoming a new mom and getting into housing, and now my daughters, they, they've been raised there at 5280. I have a family, and I'm able to use my knowledge of a broken system that I was raised in, and the knowledge of who Jesus is, and be able to use that to help other people get through whatever obstacles they're going through. Without Movement 5280, I would not be here, and I know that a lot of the people who are, have been at the center for 12, 13, 14 years like me, would tell you the same. It's a family. It's a place that you can go to feel safe and not judged for your past, or who you are, or where you're at. It's a place to go where you're just going to be loved, and we're going to walk life with you, and we don't turn our backs on you just because you're going through a rough patch. Without that, this world is just going to fall apart. We just need to love each other, and that's the only reason I can stand here and say anything about 5280, is because they did that for me, and they continuously do that for me. Like I said, I work at Movement 5280, so I do help people navigate the obstacles that they're going through. I just got a certification to be a peer recovery specialist, and I'm able to use the, the skills that I have to help the people who walk through the doors, and it's important for us to be there, and it's important for other people to go and reach out and to try to help instead of shutting it down, because anybody can be homeless. It's one bad decision, one missed paycheck, and you could be in the same situation, and you would want our help. You would want those resources available to you if you were in this situation.
Thank you, Ms. Estes. Do we have any questions from council members? Member Pring?
Thank you very much for being here tonight. So does 5280 support those who want to do the certification to become peer support specialists?
Yes, they paid for mine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, thank you for your time this evening, Ms. Estes. Our next speaker is Shyla Marie, here to speak about 5280. Good evening, Ms. Marie. If you could state your address and cross streets for the record.
Yes, Broadway and Hampton area, 3450. I just want to say I'm here to support 5280. It takes a village, right? These people have been nothing but family to me. I aged out of the foster care system as well, once I was 18. Fortunately, I did have an apartment, but I didn't have the skills, I didn't have what I needed in that apartment. 5280 has been walking along my side. I am now in the job readiness program, and what that means for me is... and what that means for me is I get a, the privilege to make that extra money, just because I'm going through severe health issues at the moment and I'm not able to hold a normal job. Fifty-two eighty, thank God, they were, they've been there every, like, every step of the way with me. I talked to so many people and I had the privilege to pray with so many people as well and they tell me, "You guys are an angel sent from above. You guys are here to help us. They're here to help us with advice," you know, "and I agree with what my peers said from 5280, you know, it's just a saving grace." My favorite part about going to 5280 is going to church on Sundays, getting that word of God, spreading the word of God, you know. Like everybody else, I do encourage the neighborhood to come here testimonies. Come see what we're about. Volunteer once in a while, you know. I know it's very skeptical at times, but I promise you, it's not like that. Once you're in that building, you literally feel the presence of God. You just know that you're home. You know that you're loved. And like everybody said, you're never judged for nothing, you know. It takes a village. We're not perfect. I'd rather attend church with broken people than people who are perfect. That's all I have to say. If you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you for your time this evening, Ms. Marie. Our next speaker is Lydia Damaris, here to speak regarding, can correct my...
Oh, that's right.
Did I do it? Very good. Thank you for your time this evening, Ms. Damaris. If you could state your name or address and cross streets for the record. Appreciate it.
Yes, Lydia Damaris and I, my major cross streets are Dartmouth and Grant. And thank you for listening to me today. I have been a homeowner on the thirty-one hundred block of South Grant Street in Inglewood for twenty-one years. Inglewood is a great place to live. We raised our children there. They're both grown, living their own lives, have to, you know, kind of their own life. And I am happy and proud to call Inglewood my home. I have fantastic neighbors and finally, young kids are starting to move into our neighborhood. And I think that's because people are allowed to build additions onto their homes now. Yes, there are the scrapes and bigger homes are being built, but it's allowing more families to move in into our neighborhood and I love seeing that. There's a lot of kids on my street now that we never had before and I think it's due to people really enjoying living in Inglewood. So I'm, am concerned about 5280. Since it has moved in, I'm concerned about the impact on the neighborhood. There has been quite a few altercations that have happened over there that I can see directly from my home, which are, are concerning. I guess when I heard Tina talk, she said, "Come talk to us. Come meet us. Here's our phone number and so forth." I've never met them. Since they've moved in, nobody has ever come to anybody on our street and said, "We're your neighbors." Meeting your new neighbors, it's a neighborly thing to do, right? You should be transparent with who you are. Make your neighbors feel safe. Be respectful of noise, planned events, and home changes. Since they occupied, 5280 occupied the church on Grant Street, there's been no communication with neighbors. Not a knock on the door or a flyer or anything saying, "Hello, we're 5280. This is our mission. This is what we like to bring to the community. What questions can we answer? How can we make your neighbor feel safe?" This lack of communication transparency is what has me concerned. I feel anything but safe. They have not presented themselves as a good neighbor, in my opinion. I ask for transparency from 5280 in the city of Inglewood around their future plans for the site at thirty-one ninety South Grant and future plans. My question is, if you had a business move into your block and you had no knowledge of it, no transparency as to who they are, what their mission is, and all you could find was conflicting messages on their social media websites, some saying that they're a day shelter for young adults, others stating that they want to open up transitional housing for addicts who are recovering and thirty days clean, and then they're advertising some days of church, some others not having church. Now, I've been told from somebody coming to my home, they're going to have church services three nights a week that go till nine o'clock at night. Would you feel safe and would you feel like this is a good neighbor?
Thank you for speaking tonight. Do we have any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Damaris, for your time. Our next speaker is, I believe, Tim Rogers, here to speak about 5280 as well.
Oh, yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Rogers. If you could share your address and cross streets for the record?
So I don't live in Inglewood, but I do volunteer at 5280. My wife, Jamie, is actually the community director down at 5280. And they do work with a lot of broken people, a lot of people that don't come from stable homes, very troubled youths. And I don't know how many times I've walked through that building without hearing somebody say, "Where's Mama Jamie? Where's Mama Tina?" They all consider Jamie and Tina like moms that they never had. They, they always tell me, "I don't know what I would do without you, without those ladies." They wish they had moms like them. You know, you're not safe anywhere anymore in this world. Everyone goes to Walmart and King Supers. There's plenty of violence down there too, but you still go down there to shop. You know, Tina said that church has been about a hundred people a week. That's grown from the forty that we were having on South Broadway. So that means they're doing their job. They're getting people to Jesus. And that's the main goal in life. And I say, believe in Jesus or not, you should come to church every Sunday with us. Start at twelve-thirty and by the time you walk out that door, one of those ladies will have you believing in Jesus, that's for sure. So my wife cooks for Movement 5280 a couple of times a week. And that is hard to do out of a home kitchen. It takes a team effort and our whole family volunteers down there. We have an eighteen-year-old son. He has his seventeen-year-old girlfriend that comes down with us. We also have a fourteen-year-old son and a six-year-old daughter and not one time have I ever felt like they were in danger. The, the guys and girls down there play with them. They dance with them. I mean, we've got a video of one of the guys having a dance-off with my six-year-old daughter and it is the most hilarious thing you've ever seen. I think she outdanced him, though. But really, it's not a bad place. I think that it's all miscommunication and hearsay. And I think if you want to know what it's about, come. We're there. We ain't going nowhere. I'll tell you that right now. You moved us anywhere else, that church is going to grow and grow and grow. And eventually, we're going to need a new building because it ain't going to hold us. So I'll tell you that. I mean, do what you need, but that's all I got to say. I just hope that you all actually come down and see what it's about and take the time to give it a chance. I get that there's problems everywhere in this world. You ain't safe at a stadium, at Walmart, on the street, nowhere. So just come see what it's about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Do we have any questions from council? Miss?
Don't ask any hard ones because I don't have any answers.
Can, can you give me the hours of operation for Movement 5280?
So on Mondays, they have Celebrate Recovery from four-thirty to six-thirty with a mill. Tuesdays, they're open from ten to one. That's the mental health day. And they, they have counselors on site. Wednesday, am I wrong on my time check? Okay, Wednesdays, I believe, is from ten to three. Thank you. And that is the Resources Day and a mill. Thursday, I think, is Food Bank from ten to one-ish. Friday is Youth Night from five to seven?
Five-thirty to seven.
Oh, five-thirty to seven. You guys should come down for that one especially. You'll see some crazy stuff down there. And then Saturdays, they're closed. And Sundays, we have church service. We're open from eleven to three. We have donuts and coffee in the morning and a little, you know, meet and greet kind of thing. And then church service starts at twelve-thirty. And then we do a lunch after that that typically my wife provides. And it's super good food. She's a great cook. You guys are welcome too, any one of you.
So outside of those air times, your, the doors are shut and locked then?
We do, well, we have staff on site, you know, to make sure everything goes smoothly. I really am part of that, so I better not, I better not speak on that one.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your time, Mr. Rogers. Our next speaker, I, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't read this name. It starts with a J, last name starts with an H. That's, thank you. If you could tell us your name and address or cross streets, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Sorry you couldn't read my name. I probably signed it and nobody can read my name then. I'm Jim Hayhurst. I am Tina's husband and I've been working with Movement 5280 since it started. And I, I am not a worker there. I'm a volunteer there. I'm also part of the board of Movement 5280. So I do know a lot about some of the issues. There's been some misrepresentations tonight, but it's understandable. Fear does that to people. We want to be a good neighbor. It was said that we haven't reached out. We had multiple times where we did bring flyers out to the neighborhoods, asking people to come to several meetings that we had. We have continued to do that. We will do it more often. Obviously, we have done a bad job of getting to everyone, but we'd love to do more of that with them. And maybe these meetings that we're going to be starting tomorrow and the night after that will be helpful. If people are interested, the, the several times we did have the open houses and the meetings, we had a handful of people come. And it wasn't because we did not, it wasn't pushed out to the neighborhood. It was actually put in some of the Inglewood communication things to, to do those kind of things. So I do understand that if you're living in the area and someone's walking down your street that doesn't look like you do, it, it can be fearful. I think once you understand who those people are as people, you may not be as afraid. My daughter, when we first opened the center, was sitting in her car because she was a sixteen-year-old crying over some boyfriend. And, and one of the guys there, his name was Dave, and he called himself the Urban Survivalist, about six foot two, about three hundred and fifty pounds, big burly beard. Most people would walk across the street and go the other direction. And Dave walks over and goes, "Jaden, do you need a hug?" And she goes, "Yes." They're people. They really are people. Most of, almost everyone that comes to 5280 is coming there so they can get that step up. The folks that don't want it, that want to quote, be on the street or want to continue their lifestyle, they don't come near us because they do know we will call the police. They do know that we will set them straight and they do know that the people that come there will do the same thing. If they're coming to our building, they're coming because they want that next step up. And those are the people that I would think you'd want to be able to help. At the same time, I understand the fear.
Mr. Hayhurst, thank you for your time. Your time's up. Any questions from city council? Seeing no questions, thank you for your time, Mr. Hayhurst. Our next speaker is Erin Stefan, here to speak about 5280 as well. Good evening, Ms. Stefan. If you could state your address, cross streets for the record. Thank you for coming.
Hello. Thank you for having me. My name is Erin Stefan. I'm speaking today in support of Movement 5280. As a former housing resource navigator with Arapahoe County, I found Movement 5280 to be a place that accepts everyone with open arms. Now, as most of you are aware, Movement 5280 opened its doors in September twenty-twenty-three for a ribbon-cutting ceremony that was open to the public, including neighbors, and has been in operation since. Movement 5280 is a church and a resource center for youth and young adults. There is much more to what is happening at Movement 5280 that is not being shared for what it actually is. I have seen people get second chances, get IDs and other vital documents needed to get housing, obtain motel vouchers to get off the streets, especially when temperatures are below freezing, speak with a counselor or a peer recovery coach, warm up with a nice meal, even obtain housing, but most importantly, leave with a sense of worth and hope for the future. Movement 5280 is more than a day shelter or resource center. It exists to effect positive change in our community. To me, these all sound like great things. Another concern raised is the generalization of individuals that are experiencing homelessness. In my previous role, I worked directly with these people that came into Movement 5280 to get them ready for housing. Most of them shared with me their stories, of which they fell on hard times and were desperate to change their situations. After all, with the increased cost of living in Colorado, we all could be one paycheck away from being in their exact shoes. These individuals are not all violent and not all drug users. I've had, I've actually heard numerous people come to speak at city council that want to get this message across, that they're just like you and me, regular people that had something happen that resulted in them having to live on the streets. Again, these people are working their hardest and deserve respect and dignity. I, as well as any staff and volunteers at Movement 5280, are happy to engage in conversations with neighbors to listen to their concerns. After all, the city of Inglewood's vision is advancing the community together. To close, I want to share one final quote from Kenneth Davison, and this, he was actually featured on the Tri-Cities Homelessness Initiative webpage, whom I and Movement 5280 staff and volunteers have had the pleasure of working with to get housed despite so many barriers. He said, "I used to sit on a bus bench in the snow and watch people driving by. They look at you with disgust if they look at you at all. You start to believe nothing good will ever happen. I prayed a lot and God gave me Kelly, a volunteer, and Movement 5280. Now I tell all the new folks on the street to come down to 5280. The ones who don't might not make it." Thank you.
Thank you for your time, Ms. Stefan. Do we have any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you. Our final speaker for the night is Marcy Brown, here to speak regarding crime. Good evening, Ms. Brown. If you could give your address and cross streets for the record?
I live in Inglewood District One and I've asked Stephanie to load up a video. It's a compilation of the last five months that have been taken in the area where 5280 resides. I believe this is someone trying to break into a home. Okay. Yeah, they did try to commit crime. I didn't talk when you were speaking, so I would ask the same courtesy from you. You know, the city could have done a lot more than they did regarding Movement 5280 moving into this neighborhood. They could have had a big meeting with all the neighborhoods because I live two blocks away from it. And you could have set the tone for what 5280 was able to do in that church. And you could have set the tone for what Fifty Two Eighty was able to do in that church or not. I don't think anybody here thinks that Fifty Two Eighty is anything but does anything but good. But it's the point where they put it, where they put their location, where people are raising kids, families, where people want to walk, their dogs. There's a lot of problems over there and you're pretty much just hearing one side of it tonight, honestly, how I feel. Um, and also with Ms. Hayhurst speaking, I'm sure she means well. Her daughter and her son-in-law mean well, but they're directors of Movement Fifty Two Eighty. And guess what? They live in Parker. They don't live in Inglewood. So they don't have to live across the street from all this kind of, all these problems. Do any of you want to live across the street from, from the, this location? Anybody here?
Thank, thank you.
And they can buy homes there?
Thank you for your time, Ms. Brown. Um, any questions for Ms. Brown? Seen none. That concludes public comments. Um, now we're, um, at public comment response, and I'll be doing the public comment response tonight. I'll go ahead and address some of the non-Fifty Two Eighty comments first and then kind of deal with everything else at the same time. Um, first of all, I wanted to thank Marson McGilly from SBDC for coming. We're really appreciative for the partnership that our Economic Development Department has with, uh, the South, Aurora South Metro, Matt, South Metro SBDC and the, um, the support that they give to our thriving small business environment here in Inglewood. Uh, Ms. Bailey, thanks for coming to speak again about the, um, the flood, our flood plan. I just want to distinguish, I know you've talked about this many times, distinguish between the Caliber Plan or the Caliber Study and the OLTAC Plan that actually designed the changes that were made in the upper south Inglewood Basin. The Caliber Study was a thirty, kind of a thirty thousand-foot view. And the OLTAC was actually where they took that, um, thirty thousand-foot view and put it into practice. So they're not competing plans. They're ac- it's actually, the OLTAC Plan is putting into practice what the Caliber Study said. Now, the Caliber Study didn't go into as much depth because they weren't actually drawing up plans, but that's why there's a distinction there. It wasn't two competing plans, it was the first big picture and then smaller picture after that. Um, Mr. Cordova spoke again tonight and, um, for those of you who, you know, heard him say that I was gaslighting the city or something like that, I encourage you, if you, you know, just go back and watch his previous comments and see if that's accurate. But, um, the reason we have standards for our library, even for things that are illegal, is because if somebody commits a crime at the library and they go and they, they get a ticket for it or something, they could be back the next day doing the same, same thing again. So the, the standards policy allows us to exclude people from our library who are consistently causing problems at the library. And I'm glad that that standards, those standards of policy are in place. And, um, I'm glad to hear that Mr. Cordova is, um, supportive of us having, uh, uh, codes that would prevent pornography in the library. At least that's the way I understood them. Maybe I didn't fully understand them right tonight. I don't want to put words in his mouth. Um, uh, and, uh, uh, Mi- Mr. Young, thank you for coming back to speak to us again. I'm sorry for the, um, situation that you've been through and your experiences with the police department. I'd like to, um, understand a little more about what's going on. Um, but I do want to say that I'm, I'm sorry that you had people come to your door like that and, um, wish that that didn't, didn't happen for you. Now, I'll kind of address everything regarding Fifty Two Eighty kind of at once here. Um, this, this, uh, this hits home for me in a lot of ways because I used to live on the thirty-one-hundred block of South Logan Street, um, directly adjacent to Inglewood Bible Church. I was on staff when it was Inglewood Bible Church, uh, many years ago, I was pastor there and, um, had, you know, it was sad to see the decline in the previous use of the property and actually was quite excited to hear that Movement Fifty Two Eighty was moving into there and knowing that there would be good services provided out of, out of that building. Um, uh, I do want to clarify a couple of things. The city did not, there was no approval process. There was, there's, since it's not, uh, a change of use, um, then the city did not have to, they did not have to come to the city to apply for, um, a special use permit or anything like that. And actually, federal law gives, uh, religious organizations and churches, nonprofits, um, pretty wide latitude about how they put their, um, religion into practice. If it's something that's a firmly held religious belief, they're allowed to do that with, um, with their church property. And that's kind of the situation here. That's the federal, um, the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act actually protects churches for putting, you know, actually doing the things that are consistent with their faith. So, um, the, what they are, and then it was a private purchase, so the city never, as, you know, as some made the point, this, the city never saw that contract. We never had to approve the con- the sale contract. That was totally independent, it was a private, private sale. The city didn't fund it. I didn't even know about Arapahoe County funding until after it happened. That was not a part of the Tri-Cities Initiative. Um, I'm glad that they got that grant. I think it's a good, you know, good use of American Rescue Plan Act funds. Um, but we didn't, we didn't actually have anything to do with it. And so there was no process to go through, no public hearings, nothing like that is, um, required or even allowed under the law. You know, we can't go in and force, you know, force them. If they want to go and announce it to, to neighbors, um, as they have done on different occasions, that's totally acceptable. And I'm glad they did that, um, and hope they do more of that because I think that's really where this comes, this comes down to me is this is a, um, this is, this, if, if there's illegal stuff being done on the property, then the city, um, we need to, we need to have that reported to the police so that it can be dealt with. And, um, I hope that Fif- Movement Fifty Two Eighty will do that. I hope that neighbors will do that as well. And I hope we'll figure out ways to work together as neighbors to lower the potential of that to whatever extent it's happening now. Obviously, we're getting conflicting reports, you know, and then, of course, we're hearing about things happening in other neighbor, neighborhoods that are not, um, not associated with, with homeless ministries. I actually had a guy on my, in a right, I, I happened to walk outside last night about nine o'clock and there was a man, uh, on my front porch, uh, front sidewalk, trying to plug into an outlet on a homeless person. So it happened, it kind of happens all over. I don't live anywhere close to a homeless ministry and, and this is a, this is, this is a citywide, a statewide, a nationwide problem, and we need to be providing services, providing housing. We need to figure out ways to deal with this. And the city can't, the city can't do it all. I mean, the Tri-Cities, we're trying to, you know, we're trying to do some things with, with federal funds, um, helping fund some organizations. We can't do it all. We need organizations like Movement Fifty Two Eighty to be engaged as well. Um, I know we had something similar, like similar challenges happened with Giving Heart a number of, of years ago. I understand that there are challenges in neighborhoods when a new business ministry organization, uh, moves in and it takes time to work through those things. But the path forward here is good neighboring. And I can't speak for how well Fifty Two Eighty has done that. I can't speak for how well the neighbors around there have done that. What I hope is that moving forward, we can deal with it on that level. Um, and I know some people would like to see this organization shut down. I don't see any way that's going to happen. What I would like to see is, um, to the extent that Fifty Two Eighty could do better as neighbors, I, I'm confident that they are eager to step into that. And to the extent that the neighbors are willing to, to work with them and figure out what, what needs to be reported and how, what processes or policies can be changed in order to, in lower, in, in, decrease the impact on the neighborhood, I think that's the path, that's the path forward. Um, neighbors getting to know and serving their neighbors. The city's role in this is to, hey, when a new organization moves in and attracts a different kind of foot traffic, then maybe that does require more patrols. If we need to do that, we need to do that. If we need to, you know, definitely be responding to calls and, um, making sure we're enforcing our laws regarding any illegal activity. That's the city's, that's the city's role here. But we are, the city wants to help solve this problem. That's why we have this meeting set up tomorrow night between five-thirty and, um, seven-thirty at the Mallie Rex Center. There will be follow-up meetings with Fifty Two Eighty and, um, this could be a longer, you know, take a longer time to kind of mediate the differences and figure out a path forward that, that everybody kind of can understand and, and get on board with. And that's, um, that's what I certainly hope will happen. Unfortunately, I won't be able to be at the meeting tomorrow, I'll be out of town. Um, but I know several council members will be there and, um, I just wish you all the best in resolving the issues on a neighbor-to-neighbor, um, level. Any other, uh, council requests or responses? Um, Member Ward?
Uh, just a, a moment of personal privilege, if I may, since my own personal conduct was addressed by one of the public commentators tonight.
Go ahead.
Mr. Cordova made reference to a Facebook post. Uh, for the benefit of everyone in the audience, uh, I do maintain a personal Facebook page. Uh, there are members of this community who are friends on Facebook, but the vast majority of my posts on that personal Facebook page are aimed at friends only and are not public posts. Uh, that being said, uh, I will read tonight, uh, for everyone's benefit, exactly what I posted on Facebook. Uh, I said, "A man who refuses to say whether he is an Inglewood resident literally came to city council meeting tonight and threatened to initiate a recall against me because I will not support overturning the city's rule against viewing pornography at the computers in our library. Personally, I think this would be the easiest to defend recall in the history of recalls." That's what I said. Uh, I was accused of saying something insulting about, uh, this individual. I, I don't know what that was. Um, I, so, um, I wanted to put that in the record. Um, and I, I did have a, a couple of, uh, there wa- there, there was one other comment made tonight about my failure to respond to an email, um, when I was Mayor Pro Tem. And, uh, I would like to give my apologies, uh, to Ms. Patel for failing to respond to her email. Sometimes, uh, I do not respond to emails and sometimes that's because I don't have a good answer. Um, and I, I suspect that's what happened in this case. Uh, I do my, my best to respond to emails that I feel justify a response, that I can respond to or I have something I can offer. Um, and in this case, that did not happen. So, uh, my apologies to that constituent. And then lastly, one more note of personal privilege. Uh, one of the speakers tonight, Ms. Marie, I, I had the privilege of driving her. I, I drive Uber part-time. I drove her just a couple of days ago, um, picked her up near the city center and took her to her destination. Uh, we did talk a little bit about Fifty Two Eighty, uh, during the ride. Uh, I did not tell her who I, who I am or what I do during the day. Um, but I, I found her story incredibly compelling, um, and I was grateful that she shared it with me and I enjoyed the time that we spent in the car together. That's all I have, thank you.
Uh, Member Russell?
Thank you. Um, I actually would like to do a council request on, uh, Mr. Young and I would like all the information, um, and the reports that were taken on that incident, February twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four, at four-thirty-two AM. I also, um, would like to know why it took so long and why nothing still has been done with victim assistance. Um, I would like to thank all of you, and I know a lot of the people have already left, that came to speak on the other side. Um, it is very, it is very difficult. I have lived in this city over sixty years and Inglewood has changed drastically. And there are problems all over the city. Um, Mr. Um, Nicol- or Mr. Young does not live near Fifty Two Eighty and there is problems there. There is problems all over the city and that is something that this council needs to deal with. And, um, I think that we all have had some questions and, um, hopefully we are moving forward with that because things need to change in Inglewood. Um, with that said, I've heard every one of you that came with concerns about what's going on in your neighborhood and I apologize. Um, with that said, I am very thankful for Fifty Two Eighty because there are homeless ministries that are doing absolutely nothing to help the homeless. And I believe that Fifty Two Eighty is doing a lot. Um, a- and so I'm thankful for them. Um, it's not Fifty Two Eighty's fault, it's a problem elsewhere and it does need to be dealt with. And so I want to thank you all for coming out to bring it to our attention. Thank you very much.
Right.
Thank you. Um, to Biggy Van, to piggyback on Member Russell, I would like to find out, um, with Mr. Young, a council request, maybe we could look into. He mentioned that when, um, this person, and, and he was a gentleman and didn't mention the name of the person, but apparently he's known to the police. Um, when he was on the phone with nine-one-one, they were saying that this call wasn't a priority. If I could do a council request, um, where we could find out what constitutes a priority or not, um, if we could look into that, um, and see, please. And I also want to piggyback on, um, what the Mayor Pro Tem and Member Russell and everyone else has said. Um, I agree with what has been said. The services that Movement Fifty Two Eighty provide are important. Um, without them, I think that the problems that this city and other cities, because I do believe that other cities, um, people come from other cities and use the services of Fifty Two Eighty would be so much bigger than they are. Um, I also sympathize with those people that live in and around that vicinity. So I think that we need to work as a community on coming up with solutions opposed to saying, you know, let's get rid of them, let's come up with a way to do it on some of the things that were said tonight. Um, hearing that Movement Fifty Two Eighty's been around for fourteen years, um, was eye-opening to me. Um, so I thank everybody that came. I hope that people, you know, come to the community meeting tomorrow and hopefully solutions could be made. I've heard over and over again that Fifty Two Eighty wants to be a good ne- neighbor and things can be done so that everybody, um, could work together and live in har- harmony. Um, sometimes it's not Fifty Two Eighty or the, the group that's wanting to help with the solutions. That's the problem, is the people that need the help that are causing the problem. And it's that, those people that we have to, um, find ways to say, hey, you need to be better, otherwise we can't let you come here. So I think we need to work on those solutions, so, thank you.
Thank you, Member Wright. Uh, oh, Member Ward?
Sorry, Mayor Pro Tem, just one more follow-up. I thought that my fellow council members would request this, but, uh, to add to the council request regarding Mr. Young's situation, uh, when they become available, I think that the dispatch recording would be revealing for the body to hear. Uh, so, uh, I would like to add that to the request. Uh, I'm sure the case is probably still open, so that may not be available, uh, for either us or the public at the current time, but I want to make sure that we close the loop on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Ward. Let's take a ten-minute break, um, and, uh, we'll be back here at, uh, ten-ten. All right, we are on to Consent Agenda Item. 9A1, B, C, 1 and 2. We had two polled tonight, 9A1 and 9C2. Can I get a motion to approve 9C1?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Approve in 9C1. All right, we have a motion and a second. Let's vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Pring?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Actually, did I put 9C2 I wanted to pull? It was 9C1.
You wanted 9, okay.
And we're voting on it.
You wanted to pull both of them?
I wanted to pull 9A1 and 9C1. It must have.
Okay. I said 9C2, I'm sorry about that.
Well, and I may have put that in the email.
What do we do now that we've started?
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay.
You know what? I know why I did it. My things are numbered 9C2 and 9C3, and they should have been 9C1 and 9C2. So it is 9C1. I'm sorry.
Mayor Pro Tem has withdrawn his motion. All right, can, um... Member Ward. Did I do that again? I'm sorry, okay. I forget. It's getting late, that's what we'll call it. All right. Now, our first item is on the consent agenda, all three, or no, we're... Sorry, you pulled 9C1, so now we can approve 9C2. Okay.
9C2, yes.
Can I get a motion to approve 9C2?
I moved to approve 9C2.
Thank you.
I'll take the second on that.
Second. Thank you, Member Ward. Let's vote on 9C2.
Mayor Pro Tem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Pring?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Um, actually, did I put 9C2 I wanted to pull? It was 9C1.
You wanted 9, okay.
And we're voting on it.
You wanted to pull both of them?
I wanted to pull 9A1 and 9C1. It must have.
Okay. I said 9C2, I'm sorry about that.
Well, and I may have put that in the email.
What do we do now that we've started?
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay.
You know what? I know why I did it. My things are numbered 9C2 and 9C3, and they should have been 9C1 and 9C2. So it is 9C1. I'm sorry.
Mayor Pro Tem has withdrawn his motion. All right, can, um... Member Ward. Did I do that again? I'm sorry, okay. I forget. It's getting late, that's what we'll call it. All right. Now, our first item is on the consent agenda, all three, or no, we're... Sorry, you pulled 9C1, so now we can approve 9C2. Okay.
9C2, yes.
Can I get a motion to approve 9C2?
I moved to approve 9C2.
Thank you.
I'll take the second on that.
Second. Thank you, Member Ward. Let's vote on 9C2.
Mayor Pro Tem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Pring?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show, seven ayes.
All right, 9A1, this is CB7, intergovernmental agreement with Adams County Health Department for the Colorado Local Intertity Air Network Clean Program. And our staff on this is, would be Mos England, she's not here. Do we have staff to speak to this one?
She is on the call.
Oh, she's on the call, okay. Our sustainability coordinator, Melissa England, here to speak on this item. You have questions, Member Russell?
I do. The questions I have on this is, how much staff time will be required to continue city participation? And the second question is, are Littleton and Sheridan participating with Adams County on this as well?
Yeah, hello, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and city council members. I am the representative for Clean. I go to their cohort meetings. It's just one hour every month. And the city of Sheridan is part of this. They've been a part of it for, I believe, a year longer than us. We started in 2022. Littleton is not a part of it, at least as far as I know of, but I know that they're trying to extend the network, so I wouldn't be surprised if they join at some point.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, please.
Okay, Member Wright?
Okay, somewhere in here it says, it hasn't been decided on how the money's going to be spent, which is not a lot. So how can we vote on something where we don't know how the money's going to be spent?
I can answer that really quick. I put in there, just because we have time to use it, and it's earlier in the year. So I put in there that we're going to use it for a project that would advance the air projects listed in our strategic plan. I will say, I also work for the city of Sheridan, and they are using their funds right now to do an air quality loan program in partnership with Arapahoe County, which seems like a really promising project, but that's the great part of being part of the cohort. You can kind of see how well it works in these other communities before you implement it for ourselves. But any way that the funds would be used, and again, it's only around that $1,000, would be to advance projects in the strategic plan.
Okay, and then one more question. I mean, it's just under $439,000 that the grant is, and Inglewood's getting maybe $1,000. How did they decide the amount of money? Because it's going to, I don't know, kind of laughable. A thousand-ish is what it's reading out of that big chunk of money. Is it because we're not part of, like, Arapahoe County libraries and that type of thing?
Yeah, that's a great question. I'm not sure the answer, but I'd be happy to find out from Adams County on kind of how they decided the amount. I will say, all the sub-receipients are getting the same amount, so it's not like one city gets more than another.
Thank you.
Member Russell?
So how many sub-receipients are there?
Um, I'm not 100% sure how many sub-receipients they have. I can find that number out, too. I know it's Sheridan, Arapahoe County, Palmer City is on there, and Northland. There could be others, so I just don't want to give a number and be inaccurate.
So Arapahoe County itself is participating in this? I mean, it seems kind of strange to me that we pulled out of Tri-County Health, or everybody else pulled out of Tri-County Health, and so Arapahoe had to go with their own health department. So why would Arapahoe County partner with Adams County?
Yeah, that's a great question. So Adams County is basically like the backbone organization that took over the Clean Program, which used to be the Love My Air Program. When Tri-Cities was dissolved, it was kind of in limbo of who would take it over. And then Adams County kind of stepped up and took it to lead.
So they took it, really, to get all of the money? Everybody else gets $1,000. Okay, thank you for those answers. I appreciate it.
All right, Member Pring, question? Oh, Member Ward was next. Member Ward?
One of the projects here is placement of sensors, and the list shows two sensors, one in Cushing Park and one in the Northwest Greenbelt. What informs the placement of sensors?
Yeah, great question. So they used to be at two other parks when they first started, and it was actually from a council request to move them to more kind of like highly trafficked with vehicle parks. So then we moved it to Cushing and to Northwest Greenbelt because they were closer to high-traffic roadways to get kind of better air information for where they were.
Seems like that might skew the data.
So one thing that, for the air sensors, it is good that they're actually in more higher dense areas, so folks can actually see the air pollution for that hyper-localized place that they're looking at.
Okay, thank you.
Member Pring?
Thank you. So do we actually have awareness out in the Inglewood community that these sensors are at these locations? And are people accessing the website? And could the $1,000 be used to just increase awareness around that?
Yeah, so we currently have, if you go in the Inglewood Recreation Center, we have the Love My Air information on their screens. And then we also have it listed on our website. There's definitely more that we can do around the education for air quality, air quality education, so we can absolutely use that $1,000 towards that.
All right. One more question from Member Wright.
Okay, so this $1,000 would go towards education and then the time that you spend attending these meetings once a month, and it looks like it's from February of 2024 through January of 2026. Would that even cover your... Your time?
So the one huge positive of being part of the cohort is that you're with other communities, and you get to hear from them about what education, air quality stuff that they're doing. So it is a benefit, at least in my opinion. And the $1,000 that could maybe be flexible, I'm going to dive deeper into Adams County of kind of what that looks like. But, yeah, the once-a-month cohort is more beneficial than a cost.
So do you know what the rest of the money is, that, you know, that EPA award? Do you know what the rest of that money is going towards that Adams County is using it for?
I am not sure, but I'm happy to find out and report back.
Okay, thank you for all the drilling. I appreciate the answering your questions.
All right, see no more questions. Can I get a motion to approve 9A1?
I move to approve 9A1.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Pring. Any comments? Member Russell?
Thank you. I'm not exactly sure that the benefits... I think the people that are going to benefit the most from this is Adams County. I don't think it's that much benefit to us. I, I don't know. I... I have terrible, doing an intergovernmental agreement with Adams County for them. I I don't know. I I have terrible, doing an intergovernmental agreement with Adams County for this, they're on the other side of the metro area. And I'm just not, I'm just not sold on all of this. So I can understand why Denver wants pollution control. What are what are we going to be able to do, even if we know how much pollution we're putting out? So anyway, I'm probably not going to support this. Thank you.
Member Wright?
I don't, we have a lot of questions that we asked of Ms. England. I would like to get those answers before we proceed with this. I'm all for clean air. But it, again, I don't know. I think we need to get some answers. Maybe there's some other EPA grants that Inglewood could get for themselves. Or work for with our, you know, little cities that we have here opposed to way up north. So, thank you.
Member Dana Camp?
I'm not going to ever say no to free money for the city of Inglewood. If EPA is going to grant money to Adams County and they are willing to sub-grant it to us, that is just fine with me. Air quality is a regional issue. It doesn't, air doesn't follow the boundary lines of municipalities or of county lines. The county that we sit in is already currently a sub-grantee in this program. So while I understand it's a bit of an odd arrangement, I'm comfortable with it if it means that the city can find more funding for the work that we're doing and then also speak additional grants as well. But I don't see anything that raises to the level of rejecting the opportunity for this funding.
Member Ward?
And I'll just say, for me, it's not so much about the money as it is an opportunity that Ms. England made reference to to participate in a regional partnership. I think the more we invest in regional relationships, regardless of the topic area, the better our ability to serve the citizens of Inglewood becomes. So I don't have any concerns with the ask here. If I did, I would be concerned about the amount of money coming in. But I think what we're being asked to do in exchange for this money is reasonable and arguably beneficial to all of our residents. So I have no issues approving this tonight.
Member Russell?
Um, I would just like to make one other comment. This really ultimately is all about the EPA and controlling us. And the bottom line is, I'm going to report about the Water and Sewer Board meeting tonight. And we stood firm against the changes that they were dictating, and they backed down, not just because we stood firm against it, but because other people did. The EPA is trying to control our lives, and I, that's another reason that I won't be supporting it. Thank you.
Member Prain?
Thank you. I think that there's, when I first saw and read through the packet and saw the $1,000, I had some question marks around it, too. Like, what can we really do with this? But I do see the benefit in that even though there's not a lot of continuing money, if it positions us to have the partnerships that Member Ward referenced, if it positions us to be in receipt of other grants. I also think that there's something to be said about the fact that part of the benefit here is that for those who are interested in our air quality and keeping an eye on it, that they can easily log onto a site and be able to make choices for themselves and their families. And so it's, it's, I just don't see where there's a real negative here. And those who want to engage can, and those who don't, don't have to.
Thank you, Member Prain. And Mayor, I can't really tell if you have a hand up or anything. You have any comments on this? Nope. Okay, seeing none, let's vote. City Clerk?
Mayor Protem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prain?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Nay.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Nay.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show five ayes and two nays.
Thank you. Moving on to nine C one. Resolution of Support for Recognition Agreement between Inglewood McClellan Reservoir Foundation, UC Health. We have Director Van Rye here to speak to this. If we have any questions, I believe Member Russell pulled this one. So if you have any questions, Member Russell?
Yes, and and I'll ask them all to you, and then if you need me to to repeat them. How much rent will the developer pay to University of Colorado Health? How did we arrive at the rent increase, which is 2.5%? And if UC Health has the authority to sublease, then why would the developer want to involve the city? If the city is involved, then why would we not deal directly with the developer? Do you want me to ask them one at a time?
No, 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 I think I'm going to, thank you, Mayor and Council. I think I'm going to package them if I can in a response. So what this is, is a recognition agreement. So the underlying lessee, the underlying lessee of the ground is UC Health. UC Health, actually, is my presentation? Okay, so here's the, here's the property, and you can see to the east side on this property, there's some vacant land. And so the underlying land is rented by UC Health. There's available space for future development of three medical office buildings, since it's a hospital. And this is to, what they would like to do is sublease part of their property that they have a lease with us on to be able to build one of those buildings on a one-acre parcel. So what the, what we have done with the recognition agreement, it's in place to protect us in the event that UC Health defaults on their ground lease. What it does is it retains a lease for that medical office building with the city. So if UC Health were to default, it would, that parcel, that sub parcel would enter, would have a lease directly with the city in place to protect the revenue stream for the city. And then the remainder of the property would be turned back over to the to the city. So we do this regularly. This isn't the first time we've done this with parcels that we've leased in this area. The the rate, the negotiation, the rate between UC Health and the sublease, that's something that they worked out. We reviewed it to make sure that we were okay with how that less, how that lease rate was established and increased. So if we didn't like how it was established and increased, we provided that feedback ultimately, reviewed it to the point where it's got terms that we're comfortable with. And again, the, this, there's two things that happen here. One is so that the the developer of this ground lease has certainty that if UC Health defaults, that they have a lease directly with the city. And then we, as a city, as the as the overarching entity over EMIRF, ensures that if UC Health were to default, we still have a sublease with that that medical office building because that's a, that's a separate party. So I'm hopeful that that packaged answer answered all four of those questions.
So the terms of the lease that we are agreeing with them are the same as the terms they've negotiated with UC Health, correct?
Yeah, so we haven't changed any of the terms to the actual lease itself. So the the underlying UC Health lease, we haven't changed the terms of that lease. What we've added is this recognition agreement to recognize that sublease. Those terms we reviewed to ensure that we were okay with those subterms, and and we are.
So are they going to be building more office buildings over there as well?
My understanding is the intention is to build three medical office complexes. And and this is the first of those three. And actually, with me is Michael Miller, who's our outside legal counsel. He's with Spencer Fane. Like, do you know if that's the intent, right?
There's enough room for three. I don't think that there are plans.
Yeah, so there's enough room for three. This is the first one. The other two seem to be still future expansions.
Okay, I appreciate that. This is one of the things that passed when I first got on council. And actually, I think it probably was in the first, within the first month that I was on council. So actually, it's going to be a long-term lease. So I appreciate you doing this, so.
Here's what, here's what I would say to that. When they first approached us, it was over two years ago, and they came to us with a proposal to change a whole bunch of of aspects of the lease, not just do a recognition agreement. We said, in those meetings, we said, sure, but what are you going to give the city? That has then reduced it down to the point where they're now not changing the lease. So if anything, we've protected the original lease and are doing this sublease, this recognition agreement in order to protect the city and to exercise the same type of approach that we have with other lessies.
I greatly appreciate that because they got a really good deal at the beginning. They paid something like $6 and something a square foot. And had we known what they were building, we could have gotten $33 a square foot. But anyway, we didn't know because they were protecting that information. Thank you.
Member Ward?
I apologize if you just covered this, Director Van Rye, but due to my slight distraction in the late hour, I didn't hear it. What's confusing to me about this is the, there's a reference to 33.3 acres in the council communication, which I assume is the acreage we're talking about here. Is that?
That's the, that's the total UC Health lease.
Okay, it says it's leased to Shea Properties, DBA Central Parks Highlands Ranch. That is this entity, or is that a different entity?
Okay, so this is where I'm going to bring up Michael Miller because
They're the developer, I think.
Because he, he can, he can talk about the relationship between UC Health and the developer, which is Shea Properties.
And the, the purpose of this question is to understand, this is the one property in the EMIRF area that has a purchase option on it?
That is correct.
Okay. Can you, can I get just a brief explanation of that relationship so I understand it better?
Sure.
If you would use the microphone, please.
My name is Michael Miller. I've represented the EMIRF throughout this transaction. Yes, the original lease was with Shea. Shea then assigned the lease to UC Health. UC Health is now the tenant. Shea is no longer the tenant. And UC Health has leased from EMIRF 33-plus acres. And they are now going to sublease one acre of that total parcel for the medical office building. Does that help?
It does. And it might be outside the scope of tonight's discussion, but it sounds to me a little bit like Shea might have pulled a fast one.
I'm sorry?
It sounds to me a little bit like Shea might have pulled a fast one. They leased this property from us with a purchase option, under sort of the idea that it's going to be used for, potentially for housing. And then they build a hospital, and they make a sizable, presumably a sizable profit on the transaction because now the hospital has the option of purchasing this property since the lease was transferred. Is that the history of the transaction? Am I reading it correctly?
Well, yes, with one exception.
Okay.
When Shea assigned the lease to UC Health, they retained the right to exercise the option.
Correct. Shea retained the right to exercise the option.
Shea did, yes.
Okay, so UC Health would not be able to actually acquire this property, the land itself, without permission from Shea?
That's correct.
So Shea still stands to make a sizable profit on the, on the property at the end of the transaction if UC Health decides to exercise the option of purchase. This is, this is way outside. I apologize. I'll put in a council request for this. We can get some more information. It doesn't change my decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Ward. Any other questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve nine C one?
I move to approve nine C one.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Any other comments? Seeing none, City Clerk, can you call the vote?
Mayor Protem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prain?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Nay.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show six ayes and one nay.
Thank you, Director Van Rye. Moving on to no, no public hearing items, no regular ordinance resolutions and motions other than the two that we just did. And on to item 12, Mayor's Choice. Mayor, you have any comments for Mayor's Choice tonight?
No, I, I just want to thank you, Mayor Protem, for standing in for me while I'm away with family. But thank you very much for everyone attending tonight. Yeah, just want to reiterate just the Malle Center meeting tomorrow, 5:30 to 7:30. Thank you very much for city staff and for everyone involved that's going to be part of that meeting. It will just be for the neighborhood, and then we'll have a second meeting at a later date with Movement 5280 and obviously have additional discussions there moving forward. So thank you very much for everyone for attending tonight and looking forward to the meetings here in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone have anything for Councilmember's Choice tonight? Member Noonan Camp, then we'll go Member Noonan Camp, Member Ward, and Member Russell?
I'll be quick. I just wanted to follow up on a conversation that we had last week, actually, about City Manager one-on-ones. And I regret actually not saying this in the moment. And I don't want to assume that this was being insinuated by any of my colleagues on council. But I do think it's important that we clarify that City Manager Lewis works, I have experienced incredibly diligently to share information with council members at the same time and in a very equitable manner, and actually holds himself to the City Manager Association Code of Ethics about sharing information equitably with all council members. And so if there is any difference in how people receive information, it could be in the sequencing of when your meeting happens to be with him. But I just want to say that he would never intentionally, in my belief, share information either at different times or intentionally with different levels of information with different council members. I'm not saying that anyone necessarily alleged that, but we also didn't say that that is not something that we would believe him to do. And I think it's important, especially when conversations are with me high tensions in the city and as our staff takes, I think, a lot of unfair criticism, that we also say what we think is true on the record. And if we didn't think that he was operating with integrity and holding himself to those ethical standards, then that would be on us to do something about that. But I have no concern there. I just think it's important that we reiterate those things and we're quite clear about the conversations we're having and when we're having them. So that's my follow-up from last week. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Member Ward?
I had a busy dance card last week. I'll spare the update tonight due to the late hour. I did want to just briefly make some comments about the public comment that we received tonight regarding 5280 in particular. I saved this for Member's Choice largely because I'm, I'm not real thrilled with the trend of all of us kind of giving comment after a public comment. That may be something that we can discuss in in the future. But I think there's a reason why council originally adopted the one council member response. I'll note that I did respond briefly tonight during, or after the the public comment because sometimes it's important to have a timely response, particularly when one faces a personal attack. And that's why I took that moment of personal privilege. I've talked to some of the neighbors about 5280, and they are concerned, and they came out tonight to share their concerns. I think this is an area where where improving communication can can help. I just can't shake the feeling that if we eventually get everybody in a room together and we let them talk, we might have a more positive outcome. So I, as of right now, I'm planning on attending the meeting tomorrow at Malle, I believe it is. I don't know if I will be able to because I do have some other things on my schedule tomorrow. But I'm anxious to see some, some change in in that relationship with the neighbors. I don't know if it's possible, can't read the future, don't have a crystal ball. But whatever the city can do to facilitate that, and I think we are doing some things now, will certainly improve the health of of that neighborhood, which those neighbors currently obviously feel that they're adversely affected by by this new presence in the community. So I think that's, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Ward. And I agree with that. I think communication could go a long ways. Member Russell, and then Member Wright?
Thank you. I would just like to give an update on the Sewer and Water Board. And and a recommendation will be coming forward about the lead reduction program in the city. And the outcome was much better than I even anticipated. They were able to take out all of the personal property viol- They were able to take out all of the personal property violations and make it more... Make it voluntary, and if a person decides they don't want the city to come in, they will be labeled noncompliant property, but nothing will happen until the property sells. And really, of all the outcomes, that is the best possible outcome. And I did ask Director Van Rye. He said the reason is that the EPA had lowered their standards. So obviously, the EPA got more feedback from a lot of cities for them wanting to violate our personal property rights, so I do believe that was a positive outcome. And then I just have one other thing, statement I would like to say, and this is a personal statement, and my personal statement is, there is only one God, the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, and He is the only true living God. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell. Member Wright?
Thank you. Just a couple of things, please. Remarks to Member Noonan Camp. Any comments during study session? We're not trying to accuse City Manager Lewis of not giving information. It was the spread of information. I was also saying that it applied to the city attorney also, that there are large, you know, timeframes of getting information, and I think that's the point. City Manager Lewis, you know, he goes through checkpoint, checkpoint, checkpoint. So there was absolutely no accusations of him not giving information. It's the time spread of when people get the information, and that's the point that I believe people are trying to give, that there's, you know, no accusations at all. It's the timeframe of it. Also, I watched... I feel like I got loud. I've watched the city manager's meeting, and it appears that Judge Jefferson's raise is off of the parking lot or that decision. So I'd like to know, you know, what's going on with that, or was it an oversight where he was taken off that parking lot? And we'd really like to get that taken care of. Another thing, I know it's late, but cocktails with council, I would like that to be something that this council discusses. I think that we are forgetting about a different part of the population with cocktails with council, and I think it should be something that we discuss as a council, and maybe a better form could be, we could come up with as a body that we have. There are a lot of different segments of our residents that are being overlooked when it comes to cocktails with council. We have single parents, for example, that would not bring their children into a bar, or people that are recovering alcoholics, people that will not walk into a bar, just like some people would not walk into a church. So I think there are different things that we can look at as a council, that we come to as a body, that I would like to discuss, and it might, you know, it's late, but I would like for us to discuss different avenues of having a social thing with the residents of this city opposed to a cocktail-type of hour, and I would appreciate that if we could put that on an agenda somewhere, please. So, thank you.
I see Mayor Ciara's hand. I don't know if you want to weigh in on that, Mayor Ciara, or speak to us?
I was going to weigh in on the first topic regarding Judge Jefferson, and let me take that as an anecdote. I did have a discussion with Judge Jefferson about 10 days back. He is supposed to provide a response, but let me just check in on him, but I don't think that there's any stalling by any means. We're just waiting to get the information so we can have a discussion about it as a council. Thank you.
For what it's worth, I like cocktails with council. I think there are a variety of ways to interact with council members. That's not going to capture all of them, but I'd like to continue doing that the way we have been. I think it was Member... Member Preng?
Thank you. I just wanted to highlight a refreshing mindset that I heard from one of our local businesses recently. I was able to wander through the aisles of the Colorado Used Bookstore and have a great conversation with the owners, and hadn't been in there before, so great location, and I loved the offerings that they had. There's so much passion for what they do, but I also wanted to bring and share that they share a mindset of true partnership in what they do downtown, not only for their own benefit, but they view themselves as, you know, a stopgap for those that are waiting in line to get into Zomo to go eat, or waiting to go to a concert at the Gothic, or providing a valued service to families that come to Craig Hospital and have to stay there for extended stays. And I just really appreciated the conversation and the viewpoint that they have to really flourish in doing what's best for them as business owners, but also just viewing themselves as true partners to other businesses within our community.
Thank you, Member Preng. Member Noonan Camp?
I was just going to weigh in on cocktails with councils, since it's something that I initiated and asked us to do last year. I think you bring up a really good point, Member Wright, but my ask is always that we do addition and not subtraction. So something that we had considered, actually, when we first started it, was coffee with council. We ended up on cocktails, because evening time was when more people could do it, but I think, you know, we tend to do... We've decided to do these quarterly. I think we could do a mix. I think we could do cocktails with council. We could probably also add a couple coffees with council for different people who can be available at different times of day or who would prefer different avenues. So I'm always open to addition, but would hate to see subtraction for those who find that event accessible for them.
And I was thinking something, and I'm sorry, Mayor Protem, I was thinking something, you know, where we could do something at the Inglewood Rec Center, where it's family-oriented, where the kids could do crafts, and we're, you know, with the kids and mocktails or something, you know, a full-family type of thing that we could put together.
I think this sounds like we have enough interest to have a discussion about this at a study session. Is everybody okay with that, putting that on the list? Are you...
I don't know if we need to have a study session. I think we... I don't know if everything needs a study session. I think we can keep doing what we're doing if we want to have a specific event, or if we want to make some coffees. I think we can make that decision now unless folks don't think we can.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, do everybody want to... Okay with having a coffee with council at least annually, or something like that?
Sure. You thinking something in the evening, coffee with council? I think evenings work better with people as a rule, but make it a family-oriented type of thing is what I... What my thought process was.
I think we can leave it to staff to find a time that they think would work well and would work for different council member's schedules. I probably can't make it if it's during the day, but that might work better for some of our residents, and so I think having some different options would be... Make good sense. I think as far as additional events, every council member is able to host their own events, and the city hosts a ton of events, so I would rather see more council participation at the events we already hold, but that's where I sit on that.
Fair enough. Okay, I think... Is that enough direction, staff? I think everybody seems in agreement with having a mix of options. All right, seeing nothing else from council, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. A couple of things. I appreciate the clarification, Member Wright, about the comments. I was somewhat troubled, thinking that maybe I was being accused of not giving the same information, because I am very diligent in that. I have talked to Krista about trying to maybe pack everybody between Tuesday and Friday for my council one-on-ones. That would be, you know, require some... Quite a bit of rescheduling, but I'm glad to do that, because the problem that, you know, you brought up with Mike Sangrin is a valid point. Mayor Protem announced it, and after I'd had a meeting with him, and then my other meetings were with the rest of you later, so that was the reason for that. So glad to take any additional feedback on that from you all individually. I also just want to point out that this is Earth Month in Inglewood, which will be celebrated all month long. Information about the upcoming SPR River Cleanup will occur on April 20th, 9:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m., so we invite you to participate in that. We also have a new park cleanup, which will occur on April 16th, and we will have a Second Annual Earth Day event outside the Civic Center Circle on Saturday, April 27th, from 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. So I encourage everybody to participate in those. I was also able to attend the soft opening of Lady Justice Brewing on Sunday after church, and it was a lot of fun and a great addition to our downtown business offerings. I also just want to point out that we have a new business, Tika and Grill Restaurant, which serves Nepali and Indian food, recently opened at 2796 South Broadway. We also have Elev 802. I'm not sure how you say that. It's an ice hockey training facility that's working to open at 3025 South Umatia. And Astor Lane Floral is opening soon at the Synergy Medical Office Building at 500 East Hamden. So I know, you know, with redevelopment going on at city center, a lot of businesses have closed, and somewhat by design, I think, by owners of some of those properties, but we have a fair number of new businesses that are opening in other parts of the city and just really happy to highlight those, and glad to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions for the city manager? Seeing none, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.